I want to welcome you to the Baltimore County Planning Board hearing on the 2024 CZMP rezoning requests within the first district. I want to welcome Councilman Pat Young and Council Chair Izzy Petroca. My name is Nancy Hafford, and I am the Chair of the Baltimore County Planning Board. I will now introduce our board, let them introduce themselves, starting on my left.
Kathy Wolfson, District Four Appointee.
Todd.
Kathy Wolfson, District Four Appointee.
Todd Warren, District One Appointee.
Katie Panero, County Executive Appointee.
Derek Johnson, County Executive Appointee.
Scott Olupka, County Executive Appointee.
Shafiq Hampton, County Executive Appointee.
Mark Heckman, District Two Representative.
Emily Brophy, County Executive Appointee.
Peter Arway, District Six, County Council.
Thank you, Board members, and the reason there's not more microphones up here is we are not here to speak this evening, we are here to listen to you. We ask for your assistance and your cooperation and respect throughout this hearing. The speakers who have signed up to speak will be given a total of two minutes. At this time, there are over eighty people signed up to speak. In District One, if you wish to speak and have not signed up, please do so immediately. Registration will be closed soon. Staff from the Department of Planning will call three speakers at a time. We ask that you come forward and please take a seat near the podium so that you will be ready to make your presentation. Please begin by clearly stating your name and organization, if you come from one, the issue number you are here to speak about, and your exact position on that issue. We ask that the audience refrains from making comments, positive or negative, or displays any kind, well, or displays of any kind while others are speaking. If you have a large group or you feel the same way, we ask that you stand in support of the speaker that's speaking instead of being repetitive. And if you hear the same thing said over and over again, just stand instead of keep repeating it, please. The Planning Board will utilize a virtual electronic timer for the speakers. This will help the speakers utilize their two minutes efficiently and ensure we have enough time for all interested parties to address the Planning Board. Everyone registered will be given an opportunity to speak. However, the Planning Board reserves the right to further limit repetitive comments and presentation in lieu of or in addition to your testimony. Written comments can be presented to the planning staff table, and they will distribute it to the Planning Board following the hearing. Following the completion of our seven hearings in February, the Planning Board will review the issues and your comments and the relative information and make our recommendations to the County Council. The Planning Board's schedule is posted on the Department of Planning's website. The County Council will then hold its own public hearings in lieu and required by code to vote on new zoning maps before September sixteenth, 2024. Thank you for your attendance, your cooperation, and your respect. Again, remember to speak clearly, stating your name, your organization, the issue number, as well as your precise position on that issue. Thank you so much. Ms. Benzley, will you call the first speakers?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Our first speaker will be Matt Totaro. Following Matt, we'll have Chetan Metta and Julie King.
My name is Matt Totaro. I live on the first block of Newburgh Avenue, a block that could be affected by Issue 1-021. Let me tell you a story. In 1996, as part of the comprehensive rezoning process, the citizens and our councilmen agreed to downzone five hundred acres in of residential property in Catonsville in order to preserve its character and charm. When you read the current issue, it seems innocent. The Planning Board says they were against the change thirty years ago, and they recommend a correction to increase the housing density. However, they're not asking for those five hundred acres to be changed, just three blocks. Why? Turns out, there's a property owner on Locust that's under contract to sell their parcel to a developer contingent on a variance or zoning change. The neighbors have already pushed back and legally prevented the proposed house from being built. This is an end run around the proper process. Turns out, there's a prominent connected Baltimore County land use attorney involved, representing the owner and developer, an attorney with direct access to and influence over the Planning Board. How else did it language, directly from their administrative hearing, make it into the description of the issue? But they were sloppy. They knew they couldn't just ask to rezone one parcel or one block, that would draw attention to the scheme. So, the attorney arbitrarily suggested a three-block area to the Planning Board as the boundary. But Newburgh isn't laid out like Sanford and Locust. On average, the lots are three times larger and incompatible with the proposed change. Here's the takeaway. Issue 1-021 assumes that the 1996 zoning change was improper. It was not. It was the will of the people, the homeowners of Catonsville, who took steps to protect their neighborhood. We will not allow this change that benefits one and potentially harms many. Oppose 1-021.
Next up, we have Chetan Metta, followed by Julie King and Anna Richards.
Do you give them documents? Okay. My name is Chetan Metta. I'm the owner of 5301 Keach Road, and I'm speaking in support of Issue 1008 and 1009. Over the last four years, my wife Anna and I have built our forever home here. We've personally designed, sourced, and have been involved in every single building detail in our home. We've spent money without worrying about property value, knowing it's not accretive because we're here for the long haul. As we begin to start to try to start to have a family, Anna and I are looking ahead. We would like to change our zoning for a number of reasons. First, we would also like to move the Erdle, which obviously has much to do with zoning, to get access to public sewer. We love tubing in the Patapsco River and walk down the street and go tubing pretty often, and it breaks my heart to know that there are fifty times more fecal matter particles in the Patapsco River than what is considered safe and healthy water levels. Second, zoning needs to be future-looking, looking out multiple decades in order to plan for conservative and reasonable expansion. While we have no plan to develop our property ourselves, we recognize that as populations grow, eventually, it is likely that our property in our area will not just be open land. We request OR2 zoning to match our northern neighbor UMBC so that it's possible for them to expand into our parcel as they've grown rapidly decades in the future. It is the only appropriate zoning when we have a much larger frontage on I-95 than UMBC themselves. Being ten minutes from downtown and BWI and adjacent to I-95, calling this rural conservation is not forward-thinking, it is pig-headed. While we do not ever plan to develop this parcel, we do know that when we pass, our children may not feel the same. We do hope to give them options, and it is my duty now, as a parent eventually, to make sure that our property is worth what it should be worth and that it's zoned appropriately so that our children can realize the value of it whenever they seem fit.
Next up, we have Julie King, followed by Anna Richards and Corey King.
Julie King, speaking on Issue 121. There is one undersized vacant lot in the three-block area affected by Issue 121. Only one place where another house can be built. Cornelius Helfrich is the owner of that one vacant property. He is not a resident of Catonsville and has not lived in or near our neighborhood. He inherited the only vacant lot on Locust Drive and entered into a contract to flip the land to developer Dominion Properties. Given the size of the lot, several variances require approval in order to build there. The developer knew of these requirements, which is why their contract is contingent on these variances being approved. When neighbors first saw plans for a pre-designed oversized cookie cutter house, we banded together and petitioned against the requested variances. We presented our case to the administrative law judge, and the variances were denied. We were shocked when we became aware of Issue 121, but we saw right through it. The owner and developer, through their attorney, John Gontrum, convinced Planning Board member Todd Warren to put up their issue as his own. They decided on the boundary and provided the language. This is simply an attempt to circumvent the process where they have already been denied and continue to face challenges getting approval. Mr. Helfrich wants the deal to go through so he can cash out and walk away. He doesn't care what happens with this lot in the future or what a new house might look like there. He's not going to live there or anywhere near it. Both he and the developer don't care that Issue 121 and its arbitrary boundary affects sixty other households, and they certainly don't care what happens in our neighborhood over the next ten, twenty, or fifty years, but we do. The zoning for an entire neighborhood should never be changed for the sole purpose of benefiting one property owner or developer. And specific to this case, it should not be changed in order to bypass current regulations that are not working in their favor just so they can build on one undersized lot. This is not okay and should not be allowed, in this instance, or ever. Issue 121 should not be approved. Please do not recommend the zoning changes requested in this issue. Thank you.
Anna Richards, followed by Corey King and Sean Petrus.
My name is Anna Richards, and I'm here in support of 1008 and 1009. Chetan and I became stewards of the land at Keach Road when we decided to make it our forever home in 2020. We've made significant improvements to the land. We want the property to be as beneficial to the community and surrounding areas as possible. There is a chicken-and-the-egg relationship between the Erdle and zoning. The Erdle was created in an attempt to reduce rapidly developing suburban sprawl. There are numerous publications detailing the negative impacts of the Erdle and zoning consequences thereof, especially on minority and underserved populations, which include degraded infrastructure, loss of industry, and poverty. From 1967 until 2012, our property was within the Erdle and Zone DR1. We oppose the zoning changes of our land, yet it happened anyway. We want to take back the right to maintain and care for the land. First, that includes access to public sewer. Even well-maintained septic systems pollute waterways at levels of eight times that of treated wastewater. We request the appropriate zoning to connect to public sewer and to support efforts to reduce waterway pollution. Second, our request for OR2 zoning. Our northern neighbors, UMBC, are zoned OR2. While we have no immediate or near-future plans for developing the land, there is no forward-thinking for the future of Baltimore County and keeping our property zoned RC5. We are not rural landowners and should not be zoned as such. Zoning is forward-looking. Our population is growing. Suitable, affordable space inside the Erdle is running out. Baltimore County will need more opportunities for development in the future to support our growth, and we want to prepare for that.
Ma'am, can you again mention the issue you were talking about? I think some of the board members don't clearly get it.
Sure. 1008, 1009.
1008 and 1009. Thank you.
Yes. Next up, we have Corey King, followed by Sean Petrus and Maple Sylvanas.
Hello, my name is Corey King. I'm a Baltimore resident, and I'm here in support of Issue 1088, 1008 and 1009, and also just for good faith, development, and zoning practices, and for the opposition of such. As someone who is currently virulently fighting rezoning in my neighborhood, which is Lutherville, a developer is trying to, in bad faith, put hundreds and hundreds of apartments in a small area that cannot handle it, and I am in opposition of that. Whereas, in this situation, I believe that Anna and Chetan are looking to have their property moved back into the Erdle so that it can be useful for the community. I think these zoning decisions need to be made looking forward at the future because I know people who would love to live in this county, and they cannot afford it. There is not enough affordable housing, there is not enough land being developed in the right way, you know? And our water resources are the most important thing that we have and the most important thing that we can pass to people in the future. So, making this area able to be on public sewer is absolutely crucial. I mean, the amount of fecal matter in this waterway is abhorrent and disgusting. And when I speak of in-good-faith opposition, I see, I have seen Anna and Chetan reach out to their neighbors, people who aren't even in a sightline of their property, to try and be good neighbors, to have a connection, and be completely disregarded, and then that indifference moved into actual hostility. I have seen people come to their house at all times of day, taking pictures of the house, some of them even coming into a private party at 1:30 in the morning and expressing that they were distinctly there to make Chetan feel uncomfortable. I don't think that this board should be making decisions based on the very loud few and should be thinking of everyone in the county. Thank you for your time, I appreciate it.
Thank you.
Next up, we have Sean Petrus, followed by Maple Sylvanas and Kirk Berry.
Hi there, ma'am. Sean Petrus, I am in support of 1008 and 1009. I live in Catonsville, my partner and our three-year-old son, currently a renter, and we're just minutes from Chetan and Anna. My partner and I have found it completely difficult to find any reasonably affordable housing for rent or to buy in the area, and are considering leaving the area as a result to save money. We find it frustrating seeing extreme efforts that some multi-generational neighborhoods like this go through to keep people out by limiting land that can be used for their proper uses. We may be south of the Mason-Dixon, but working against the greater good and prejudice should not be hidden behind the banner of tradition or heritage. Instead, we see already-developed areas being redeveloped over and over with higher and higher prices just to justify the higher costs, pushing out hard-working people who just want to raise their families. The fact that ninety percent of the county lives in one-third of the land area shows this clearly. I would like to see this property zoned so that my son can grow up in a place that is not artificially kept segregated between the haves and the have-nots. Thank you.
Thank you.
Maple Sylvanas, followed by Kirk Berry and Kelly Mayo.
Hello, my name is Maple Sylvanas, and I am in support of 1-008, 1-009. I'm a part-time caretaker at 5301 Keach Road when Anna and Chetan are out of town. I have a degree in environmental science from UMBC and am a professional arborist. I assess and address the health of trees and surrounding ecosystems. Most recent reports show that the Patapsco River Lower North Branch, which includes the Gunn Road area, is listed as impaired by the Maryland Department of the Environment for various pollutants of concern. In addition, the Baltimore Harbor, which the Patapsco Watershed feeds, is listed as impaired. With thirty percent of the measured contributions, human waste is only topped by livestock as a source for the fecal bacteria in our precious waterways. The Maryland Department of the Environment put it simply, "The Patapsco Watershed is not attaining its designated use of protection of aquatic life because of biological impairments." The reason is that even well-maintained septic systems pollute groundwater with nitrates at levels eight times that of treated wastewater. Furthermore, poorly maintained and failing septic significantly add more pollutants into the groundwater. The Baltimore County Study on Bacteria in the Patapsco Lower Branch Watershed stated that a ninety-eight percent reduction in fecal bacteria from human sources is needed to meet water quality standards. Gunn Road is located in an area of the watershed that has more septic systems than any other area by a wide margin. See the handouts provided. The leach field in the septic system at 5301 Keach Road is forty yards directly uphill of a feeder stream to the Patapsco River. Gunn Road septic systems are actively contributing to the pollution of the Patapsco River, which feeds into the Baltimore Harbor. I support the zoning change so that the access to public sewer is possible and can foster a healthier environment for generations to come. Thank you.
Thank you.
Kirk Berry, followed by Kelly Mayo and Lauren Modisette? Modisette?
Good evening, my name is Kirk Berry. I am in support of Issue 1-008 and 1-009. I am a third-generation Catonsville guy. My kids are in the fourth generation here, so we know Catonsville well. We love and use Gunn Road. I have the honor of working for the Metta's and all of their properties. More than fifteen I've worked on, including the one that we're speaking of, 5301 Keach Road. You're talking about a guy, when he says his forever home, he has put over a million dollars into this property, and when he says he's put his heart and soul in it, he was part of every design aspect of this thing. This is not a property that, I'm not saying one day couldn't change, but today and in his life, I see Anna and Chetan using this as their forever home. I wanted to speak a second about Chetan and the neighborhood that he lives in. I was a part of a meeting a little more than a month ago, and it involved all of Gunn Road. Anyone who has spoken to Chetan and Anna know the outreach that they do in the community in every way that they can. Just recently, they purchased a bunch of plans from a show in Baltimore. They reached out to the neighborhood just to see if anybody was interested in them. And you're talking about people with a big heart, big kind. They call me family, I feel the same way. I know that has zero to do with the, what's about to happen in the zoning that takes place, but to speak on the character of the guy, you're talking about a guy who, in every way, has reached out to this community. And being a part of that meeting, I could name probably on one hand how many out of the forty-some homes that were there or families that were there reached out back to him. Finally, I want to say that his tent is big. He includes a lot of people in his friends, family, and as it approaches, I just want to say that the neighborhood does not do the same.
Thank you, sir.
Kelly Mayo, followed by Lauren Modisette and Christina Frundell.
Hi, guys. My name is Kelly Mayo.
Sir, you can't bring those up here. There's a table in the lobby, you can put everything there, but thank you so much.
Sorry about that. My name is Kelly Mayo. I have been a landscape designer for forty years. I have been working with Anna and Chetan for the past two years. I know them to be of noble character and tremendous human beings. They have been working tirelessly to improve this land for them. They are also trying to improve it for future generations. They currently have a forestry plan with DNR. I have been working to include orchards, to include eventually a vineyard there. We will have permaculture plantings. Great deal of biodiversity is being put into this. I know that if there was a development plan for this property, I would be the first person to know. I'm the one that would put it in place. I stand in support of 1008 and 1009 because we need property owners who actually love the land, who want to see it improved, and who actually know that the needs of this county may change. We may eventually need that land for housing. It would be awesome if it was already zoned for that. There is simply no reason to allow water management issues on a road like Gunn to be stopped by the discrimination and hatred and fears of a few. I have been on this property when people have come to the front door on motorcycles to threaten and harass, when racial epithets have been thrown at them in ways that were completely uncharacteristic of the county. That cannot stand. These are good people who are simply trying to do their very best to make a beautiful life. If they had the heart set on development, they would have torn down the house that was there. It was condemned when they bought it. Instead, they have brought this thing back to life and made it magnificent. They are doing the same with the land. Thank you.
Thank you. Next speaker, Ms. Benzley.
Lauren Modisette, followed by Christina Frundell and Nathan Suberry.
Speakers, when you hear your name, please come forward and sit in one of the front chairs. Thank you.
Sorry about that. My name is Lauren Modisette. I am in support of 1008 and 1009. I'm a resident of Catonsville with my partner and our son. My family and I enjoy the outdoors and spend significant time in Patapsco State Park and the Avalon area in particular. The level of waterway pollution in the Patapsco River is deeply concerning to us. The Lower Patapsco is listed as impaired in the Maryland's list of impaired waters. I am personally shocked to learn how much fecal bacteria is in our waterways, and I think a lot of other residents would be too. Areas all over the state and country are taking measures to reduce the amount of wastewater pollution in our waterways. For instance, Anarundel County has allocated $1.5 billion to switch residents with septic to public sewer to help with their part of the Chesapeake Restoration Project. I don't see why Baltimore County isn't more forward-thinking in addressing these glaring issues with our waterways, one of the most important and distinctive resources in our beautiful county. It is imperative for our health and the health of our future generation that the properties with direct impact to the Patapsco Watershed are given access to public sewer to diminish the level of pollutants in the Patapsco River. This is why I support the zoning request. Thank you.
Thank you.
Christina Frundell, followed by Nathan Suberry and Barry Metta.
My name is Christina Frundell, and I'm here in support of the proposed change to Keach Road for Issue 1008, 1009. I have been a friend of Chetan's for over twenty years, and I also lived in Halethorpe, not far from Chetan and Anna, for nine years. First and foremost, Chetan and Anna are wonderful people who have turned their house on Keach Road into a beautiful home. When you visit, everywhere you look, there are personal touches they've added from the gorgeous landscaping, the orchard, and the renovated barn. Both Anna and Chetan have put blood, sweat, and tears into creating their dream home. This is a place they plan on raising their children and making memories for decades to come. But that being said, there's no reason for their property to have RC5 zoning. Their property is directly next to I-95. You can see it from their land, minutes from UMBC, and under the flight path of BWI. This is not a rural area, and it shouldn't be zoned as such. Chetan and Anna do not have any plans to develop the land. It's their own personal sanctuary. But that doesn't mean that their children, when they inherit the land, should have to be subjected to unfair zoning regulations. And one day, I imagine that this area will be needed for people to work and live. Finally, we need to plan for a healthy environment here in Baltimore County for generations to come. Septic tanks are terrible for the environment, dumping feces and pollutants into the Patapsco. Chetan and Anna have done everything possible to better the environment surrounding their property. Granting them access to public sewer would only further that goal. I just want to end by reiterating that Anna and Chetan are honest, kind, hard-working people. I feel very lucky to have them in my life, and by deciding in their favor, they will be able to continue to create their perfect dream home and many more memories for many years to come. Thank you.
Thank you.
Nathan Suberry, followed by Barry Metta and Tim Potter.
Hello, I'm speaking in support of 1008 and 1009. Chetan has been one of my best friends for the past fifteen years. We went to college together, and he has created a beautiful community of people that are extremely accepting and loving, and that's why people love and trust him. And I've seen, since he's moved into this house and they have developed it, it go from a place that was not fit to live in to a shangri-la. It is one of the most beautiful homes I've ever been in, and I come from one of what I would call the same. He's been inspirational to me in terms of what you can do with a home. And he has a love of plants that he has cultivated. He grows all nature of plants indoors and outdoors, and he contributes to the biodiversity of that land. And I believe that he will continue to do beautiful things with it.
Thank you.
Barry Metta, followed by Tim Potter and Chris Zach.
Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. I'm here to speak in support of Issue 1008 and 1009. My name is Barry Metta, and I'm Chetan's eighty-two-year-old father and a Maryland resident for over forty years. We purchased this property on Keach Road in 2012 when it was zoned DR1, and it was inside the Erdle line, as it has been, as it had been since 1967, when the Erdle concept was first established. For better development, I tried to change the zoning on the property but failed due to the deeply entrenched political strength of the Gunn Road anti-development forces. In fact, while the prior owners received strong resistance, the property was inside Erdle for nearly fifty years and was only downzoned to RC5 and moved out of the Erdle when I tried to upzone it. Now, think about it. A rural area with more development can become urban, but But how does an urban area all of a sudden become rural, just like that? It just doesn't happen. It was simply forced by anti-development forces to be pushed out of the Erdle line where it had been for over fifty years. This was some kind of a black magic. Such things just don't happen to go, any piece of property to go from urban to rural. This property, which borders on I-95 at its longest border, as well as UMBC Tech Incubator to the north, was removed from Erdle and not being in an urban area. Don't you think that's a bit ridiculous? There was and is no logic about the location of the Erdle line. It was a purely political decision to fight development at any cost and punish us, a clearly racist attitude, in my opinion.
Thank you for your comments, sir.
The sisters. Thank you.
Thank you.
Next up, we have Tim Potter, followed by Zach, I'm sorry, Chris Zach and Leah Taffetani.
When you hear your name, please come and sit in the front of the auditorium. Thank you. Sir?
Good evening, members of the Planning Board. I'm here in support of Issue 1-002. If I'd like to have the folks to support this issue, please stand up. My name is Timothy Potter. I'm here tonight to apply for the rezoning of property located at 4380, 4382 Hollins Ferry Road from DR 5.5 to BL. My family has been part of the community for over one hundred years. I was born and raised in Landstown and chosen to invest into the community as a rental homeowner. I am part of this tight-knit community, and I share in the desire to improve this area. The subject properties are currently improved with a residential dwelling that was constructed more than one hundred years ago. Once considered the highest and best use of the land, these structures are now inconsistent with the improvements that have been made in recent years to the parcels south and west of the property, which are zoned BL, ELAS, and ML. The ultimate goal is to redevelop these properties to benefit the community, to provide needed services, and add jobs to the local economy. We hope you approve this request and rezone to BL. Thank you for your consideration.
Thank you. Next speaker.
Chris Zach, followed by Leah Taffetani and Lisa Mack.
Chris Zach. Speakers, please come forward when you hear your names. Thank you.
Do we have a Chris Zach here?
I guess apparently not. Next speaker.
Okay. Next speaker will be Leah Taffetani, followed by Lisa Mack and Amber Serveski.
Hello, my name is Leah Taffetani, and I'm here tonight on behalf of my mother for Issue 1-005. She wasn't able to be here tonight to speak on her behalf. I'm here because she's lived in her home for over fifty years, and the proposal to build apartments behind her house is really upsetting her. So, the proposal to rezone for five units per acre to sixteen units per acre is a great plan for the Islamic Society of Baltimore. I had a great conversation with them yesterday as far as what they want to do in the community. And I'm here opposing it because living with many units of apartments behind a house that's full of beautiful green space and just a neighborhood of ranchers and split levels on a street that is so narrow and so consumed with traffic that this building will just add to the congestion and the traffic issues and will take away the green space. My mother's concern is also for property value and relying on her property value for her long-term medical expenses. Like I said, she's been there for over fifty years and has loved her green space for a long, long time. And I'm just opposed, she's opposed to it and is hoping it can just be reconsidered or just less buildings, less apartments, less growth. And I appreciate your time. Thank you.
Thank you.
Lisa Mack, followed by Amber Serveski and Mike Donilon.
My name is Lisa Mack. I am against 1021. In early November 2023, my husband and I and our neighbors from limited parts of two adjacent streets received notice that our houses were, quote, "located within an area being considered for a possible change" under Issue 1021 at the request of the Planning Board. Since our neighborhood has an established neighborhood association, homeowners from the potentially impacted houses met to discuss the issue, share information, gather signatures, and establish next steps. We soon learned that the requested zoning to a limited part of three streets was not made at the request of the Planning Board, per se, but was instead made by one member of the Planning Board purportedly without the knowledge of the county councilperson for District 1. In a January 31 Baltimore signed guest commentary, Catonsville resident David Plimer discussed the recently introduced Bill 324 that was introduced to bring the county's notoriously dysfunctional laws on planning, zoning, and development into the 21st century. Pertinent to this hearing is Mr. Plimer's reference to the, quote, "much-aligned practice of legislative spot zoning whereby council members can skirt the legal prohibition against legislatively changing the zoning of single properties with the net effect being ad hoc decision-making dominated by the financial interests of developers." Issue 121 feels just like legislative spot zoning and is arbitrary in its very nature, as evidenced by the fact that fewer than one-third of the houses on just three streets of the more than 656 residential streets in Catonsville are being considered for a zoning change. If the county is committed to a zoning map process that is truly comprehensive, perhaps its EZMP should occur every ten years following the master plan instead of every four years, which is coincidentally aligned with the election cycle. Thank you.
Thank you.
Amber Serveski, followed by Mike Donilon and Danielle Singley.
Hi, my name's Amber Serveski, and I'm speaking in support of 1008 and 1009.
Ms., bring your speaker down a little bit. Thank you.
Sorry, I'm short.
That's okay.
When I think of Anna and Chaythan, one word comes to mind: community. To know them is to be at home in their home and to be welcomed by their people. This is true for their friends, their families, and their neighbors. I have personally experienced this when I had my birthday at their house, and we spent hours discussing noise and parking as to not disturb their neighbors. During the party, Chaythan was outside with a sound meter to make sure that nothing got too loud. I've heard stories of them having the neighbor's children and all their friends over for hot chocolate and sledding a few weeks back, or setting up a slip-and-side in the backyard in the summer. Anna told me that she even buried their neighbor's dog for them when they were out of town. I've also witnessed Chaythan show far more patience than I could have when an aggressive neighbor showed up late at night to crash their Halloween event, missing out on time with his friends to hear the man out. Their intentionality in supporting the people around them is unmatched. They have painstakingly cultivated a home that embodies these personal values of kindness, warmth, and community. In doing so, they have created a forever home and community hub that I look forward to visiting them in for many, many years to come. I know that the decisions that they make for their land will always be done with their community in mind, and their neighbors are lucky to have them.
Thank you.
Mike Donilon, followed by Danielle Singley and Frank Meek.
Hello, I'm Michael Donilon with DBC and the head of the Open Gate Brewery located at 5001 Washington Boulevard in Hailthorpe. I'm here speaking in opposition to Issue Number 1023, which requests a downzoning of Diageo's 51-acre property from MHIM and ML to RC-2. This property has been utilized for manufacturing and commercial purposes for decades and will continue to be used for those purposes long into the future, and the proposed resource conservation zoning is entirely inconsistent with these operations. Diageo has owned and operated this property since 2000. For the first eighteen years, operations were focused on distilling, brewing, and distribution. In 2018, Diageo opened the Guinness Open Gate Brewery, which I oversee, and that operation takes up approximately eleven acres of our overall property, while the remainder continue to operate with our distillery, brewery, and distribution operations. The impact of the Open Gate Brewery has been amazing for Baltimore County. Diageo's invested over ninety million in this facility since its inception. Our taproom has welcomed more than one and a half million visitors, including a large portion of tourists coming in from outside of Baltimore County. We've also been a great partner and donor to worthy charities and organizations in the region, including the Maryland Food Bank and many others. While Diageo did recently shut down the distillery, brewery, and distribution operations, I'm here tonight to state definitively that the Guinness Open Gate Brewery is not going anywhere. We love it here in Baltimore County. In fact, we have two large multimillion-dollar investments planned. We also firmly believe that the future is very bright for the remaining property, including plans for sale and redevelopment of it that will generate hundreds of new jobs and increased property tax revenue. However, none of this planned investment in progress can proceed if the property is downzoned. Please vote to retain the existing zoning on this property. Thank you.
Thank you.
Danielle Singley, followed by Frank Meek and Howard Wellman.
Good evening. My name is Danielle Singley. I am the president of the Westview Park Improvement and Civic Association, and my testimony is regarding Issue Number 1-005. I am opposed to this rezoning request that was submitted by the Islamic Society of Baltimore, and I actually agree with the daughter of the woman who submitted the, you know, who already testified. She has been contacting me as well as many people in our community. But I'm going to talk about something that has not been mentioned yet, and I'm going to stay away from some of the things that I think are going to be mentioned tonight, and that is, I also met with the Islamic Society of Baltimore leadership, the president, Haman. And after meeting with them for 3.5 hours, I actually was left with the same impression that it's a beautiful idea, but I do have some major concerns as someone who has worked in the civil rights industry as a community advocate on how the Islamic Society of Baltimore is going to adhere to the Fair Housing Act, ensuring that people that were to move into this apartment complex would be open to anybody regardless of race, I mean, race, color, or religion. It doesn't sound like they have plans to advertise this in a manner that would be equitable for all, which would be a huge concern and a red flag for me and should be for you as well and for the councilmen. In addition to that, we are oversaturated in Walon. Thousands of apartments within five minutes of our homes walking. We have plans for Security Mall. According to the master plan templates that I have seen, they are earmarking apartments for the Security Mall area as well. We do not need more housing on this little four-acre plot of land. That area is saturated. Our schools are overwhelmed already. Johnny Kay is overcrowded. We are probably the only school area in District 1 that has not had the benefit of rebuilding any of our elementary schools, middle schools, or high schools. And for that reason, I'm asking the Planning Board and our councilmen to oppose this particular zoning request for 1-005. Thank you.
Thank you.
Frank Meek, followed by Howard Wellman and Matt Crotroko.
Good evening. Frank Meek, president of Relay Improvement Association of Baltimore County, related to Item 1008 and 1009, who stands in strong opposition to the zoning request. Item 1009 is parallel to Viaduct Avenue that borders Patapsco State Park and Historic Community of Relay. The property in question lies along a hundred-year floodplain. The last time this happened was in 1972, when Hurricane Agnes devastated the Viaduct area. The frequency of flooding in our area should come as no surprise to overdevelopment of the land, not to mention the impact of climate change. With the frequency of flooding, Patapsco State Park closes on numerous occasions to neighbors both Relay and Gun Road. A fault line runs across the Viaduct that has impacted the water table due to the building of I-95. The house formerly owned by Jack Hebert, who had to put in thirteen pylons in the ground to keep the house standing. He litigated and lastly won against the state of Maryland. Properties along Woodland have continued to sink considerably with battling erosion. What's more, the county-designated areas no less than one hundred yards is protected watershed from this area. Simply said, the topography does not support development. Does no one review this than other than us? Anyone coming to this area can quickly come to that conclusion. This area was deemed RC-5 for a reason. Yet, here we are, having to stand in strong opposition to the zoning request change. While we are mindful that individual property requests rest with the county council, in some cases by the sole discretion, it does not remove accountability according to Section 32-4-102, Paragraph A of the Baltimore County Code, that indicates development shall conform to the master plan in any adopted community plans. We doubt very much that this conforms with any objective outlined in Master Plan 2030 and certainly does not speak to any community plans that we have. In short, the Historic Community of Relay is designated by the state of Maryland and Baltimore County is not in favor of the zoning change.
Thank you, sir.
Howard Wellman, followed by Matt Crotroko and Tim Crotroko.
Good evening. My name is Howard Wellman. I am speaking against 1-008 and 1-009. I'm a resident of the Relay Historic District, and I am also the community liaison between the Historic District and the Landmarks Preservation Commission. Just a few years ago, the residents, landowners of the Historic District, and many abutting properties petitioned successfully to have the entire Historic District and those properties downzoned in order to reduce the opportunity for inappropriate development in and adjacent to the Historic District, such that it would preserve the qualities of the Historic District, which is what makes it such a unique historic community. The parcels, particularly along Viaduct Avenue, are not part of the Historic District, but they do abut, and therefore, I am speaking against this rezoning opportunity in order to help preserve the character of the Historic District within appropriate development guidelines. Thank you.
Thank you.
Matt Crotroko, followed by Tim Crotroko and Tiffany Wiseman.
Matt and Tim Crotroko will waive their time. Thank you.
Tiffany Wiseman, followed by Paul Donahue and then Nicole Nguyen. Tiffany Wiseman?
Yes.
Hi, Tiffany Wiseman. I live on Maple Avenue in Hailthorpe, and the issue that I'm here for is 1019. I do not agree with the zoning change requests put in on this property. In my opinion, it's a ploy by developer to put more houses in an already crowded development with no adequate open space. The open space currently projected on plans is nearly unusable. I recommend this portion of the property be preserved for more adequate open space for the overall development in which it sits. The only justification given for this change is to make the full property zoning consistent. The developer was well aware of the zoning of this property before purchasing. He should have purchased property where the zoning fit what he is trying to accomplish, not come into an already established community with overcrowded and outdated schools to change zoning to fit his needs. Will help of elementary be replaced or renovated to add additional classroom space for the influx of kids that will be piled into the school? The answer is no, so the county's answer to this rezoning request should be no as well. Thank you.
Thank you.
Paul Donahue, followed by Nicole Nguyen and Joe Bennett.
This regards 1008 and 1009. I'm Paul Donahue, a twenty-four-year resident of Gun Road, and I oppose petitioner's request to change the zoning from RC-5 to OR-2 and BM. There are four houses, including petitioners, on Gun Road, on Keach Road, and about forty-three houses on Gun Road. All properties are zoned RC-5. With one exception, all properties, including petitioners, are on the rural side of the Erdle. Granting petitioner's request would enable him to construct three hundred eighty-plus homes, an eightfold increase in the number of residences in our community. The county council is not allowed to impose limitations on the use of property when it changes the zoning. The owner is allowed to use the land in any of the ways permitted by the regulations pertaining to that zone, and that's from the county's CZMP website. Once the zoning is changed, then, the horse is out of the barn, as my mother would say, and there's no turning back. Mr. Meadows' representations that this is a septic-driven issue and that he has no intention of developing the property or no intention of going so far as though our two permits are just talk and not binding either on petitioner, his heirs, or later owners. Granting petitioner's request would be contra to the letter of the Baltimore County Master Plan 2030, which speaks to development on the rural side of the Erdle. Limiting development in rural areas protects open space, farmland... Limiting development in rural areas protects open space, farmland, and natural resources. The Gun Road Historical and Protective Association met on January 3rd. There was a vote after that. Forty-three voted in opposition, one in favor, two did not respond.
Thank you, sir.
The neighborhood is unanimous, and it's overwhelmed.
Thank you.
Next up, we have Nicole Nguyen followed by Joe Bennett and Zubair Anzari.
I'm here to speak against 1-008 and 1-009. I can pick up where Paul left off. So, we as a community are opposed to this. We all have our forever homes on this road, and our neighbors on Keach are not very neighborly, so I didn't come here to speak about character, but I will because they felt the need to do so. And I can tell you that the dump trucks that are coming down our road every single day with loads of dirt have been disruptive to the community. They are a risk to the children who are waiting at the bus stop on the corner, and they are destroying the road. Our community is not built for this. And we did come here, we travel, we commute to live where we live for our forever homes. So we're asking that you help to protect that. The reasons and some of the things that our developer on Keach have said are completely untrue about the neighborhood. It's one of the best communities in terms of support for each other and protecting the park. We commute from University of Maryland where we work to be near the park. This is important to all of us. You can see that the neighborhood is here to oppose this issue. The ballots that we received, all were in opposition of this issue. The meeting that the contractor alluded to, he came to represent the developer, and all he did was come to listen to the community's thoughts, did not reach out to the community, did not share any perspectives with the community. We opened a line of communication with the developer to share thoughts and plans with the community, never once did it. So, we have tried to hear the developer out, but to build a forever home, you do not need the highest level commercial zoning for your land.
Thank you. Next speaker.
Joe Bennett followed by Zubair Anzari and Ryan Grizzle.
Good evening. I'm Joe Bennett, and I'm a resident of Gun Road, and I'm here to oppose 1-008 and 1-009. I've been to several CMZ meetings in the past. I was taken back today by the community of Gun Road being vilified as racist and anti-neighbor, which we are not. And I, it's not in my speech, but I was so taken back by what happened, I want the board to understand, that's not our community. The proposed changes from RC-5 rural residential to OR-2, which would allow, as previously pointed out, over 300 housing units, will completely destroy the character of the Gun Road community and be extremely detrimental to the environment. The residents of Gun Road have lived here for generations, and new residents purchase their properties because of the RC-5 zoning. All of the properties, including 5301 Keach Road, are within the RC-5 zoning and outside of the Erdle. The RC-5 zoning was also implemented to protect the Patapsco River drainage spaces. Many of the Gun Road properties border Patapsco State Park, which is zoned RC-2. RC-5 zoning provides protection for these high-quality natural resources. None of the properties in the RC-5 area has public sewer, and they are not permitted, sewer is not permitted outside of the Erdle. The proposed Baltimore County 2030 Master Plan has the Gun Road RC-5 properties identified as part of the Resource Preservation Zone. Baltimore County and Maryland are facing many challenges to fund critical needs, including blueprint for Maryland's future, transportation, and our failing sewage facilities. Changing the RC-5 zoning is just wrong. None of the properties within the area have sewer, and we don't add to any sewage cost demands. I strongly oppose proposed CMZ changes 108 and 109.
Thank you, sir.
Next up, we have Zubair Anzari followed by Ryan Grizzle and Karen Wilson.
Good evening. My name is Zubair Anzari. I'm the president of the Patapsco Ridge Inwood Farms HOA, and I'm speaking in support of issue number 1-005. This is the issue related to Johnny Cake Road in Dillon Heights, where the ISB, the Islamic Society of Baltimore, is proposing to enhance the community and build things that would benefit elderly folks, youth, as well as folks that have special needs. And as the president of a very diverse HOA, I surveyed my HOA, which is about a mile, less than a mile away from this area that's going to be enhanced, and most, if not all of the members that we surveyed in the last couple of days are in favor of this beautiful enhancement that would be really crisp and fresh for not just Baltimore County, but specifically for District One. And I can tell you that this plan, and especially a lot of the folks that are currently living there, I drive, I ride my, I ride with my kids in that area, and there's currently, or there used to be, a title car place as well as a bug factory. I think what ISB is proposing is something that will accommodate multiple demographics. They've always seen all different races, all different colors, and I know the young lady had mentioned that it's a beautiful idea, but there is some pushback. So I'll finish with this, with Black History Month being here in February. Never be limited by other people's limited imaginations. If you adopt their attitudes, there's the possibility one exists because you'll have already shut it out. You can hear other people's wisdom, but you've got to reevaluate the world by yourself. That's from Maine Genesence. I'm hoping that you guys will look at this issue and support it, and really help enhance that community for others. Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
Ryan Grizzle followed by Karen Wilson and Willie Moore.
I'm Ryan Grizzle. I'm a resident of Gun Road and the president of the Gun Road Community Association. We first found out about this through mail. We're against the 1-008, against 1-009. We first found out about this issue because we got letters in the mail. The community got activated to find out what was going on, and we have reached out to the owners of the Keach Road property and everybody in our community. We had some meetings, and we put out a vote. We had a vote of 42 against 1/4. That 4 was the property owner. Pretty much our stance is that there's, if this is a forever home and there's no plan to develop this in the immediate, or not till later on, then there's no reason to approve a zoning change right now. That's all I ask.
Thank you. Speakers, remember when you come up to please speak loudly, not just so we can hear, but the people in the back of the room can hear.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Next up, we have Karen Wilson followed by Willie Moore and Chris Akkad.
Good evening. My name is Karen Wilson, and I am here in opposition of issue 1-021. In short, the background behind the rezoning is for what the planning board believes to be used to meet the requirements of the comprehensive plan and the master plan for the county. I do not believe that rezoning will meet these plans, and in fact, I believe rezoning creates opposite of what these plans call for. The entire purpose of the master plan is to create a plan for Baltimore County to grow with goals for future development in a sustainable way. Through the process of development of the master plan, the county has identified specific areas for growth, Catonsville being one of them. The proposed rezoning is limited to three streets, hardly an area that will prevent real growth opportunity. Additionally, the area that these streets encompass already do not meet the comprehensive plan for the county and the density rate designations. The setback rates of the homes and the per acre are not in line with the density rate of 2 or density rate of 5.5. Rezoning them will only be beneficial for future development. Future development in the area would provide no real growth for the community. If the planning board would like to have a comprehensive approach to effectuating the master plan and identifying areas for rezoning and future development, it should review the Catonsville plan that the planning board adopted in 1991 and engage the community in developing a new one. Currently, Sanford Avenue already meets the requirements of the master plan. Sanford Avenue is one of very few homes in Catonsville that have businesses, single-family homes, and duplexes. The duplexes on the upper portion of Sanford provide affordable housing in an area where there's very little affordable housing. If additional housing is needed, it should be part of new construction that can provide more affordable housing. It should be effectuated by passing rezoning that could eliminate the current affordable housing that is available. The county infrastructure cannot accommodate new construction in the area. All the schools in the area are either at capacity or over. Rezoning and new housing would likely cause a crisis in the classroom space.
Thank you.
Lastly, I just want you to consider that Catonsville has three roads that are considered F, an F rating for transportation.
Thank you, ma'am.
And there's a moratorium on building in areas with F for transportation.
Thank you so much.
Next up, we have Willie Moore followed by Chris Akkad and Hassan Hamad.
Good evening, everybody. My name is Willie Moore. I live at 510 Gun Road. I am here opposing 1-008, 1-009. I am a former planning board member, First District Representative. Thank you, Mr. Warren. This issue is disturbing for many of us. I think it's important for you to understand our community. The boundary, we have no contiguous neighbors. So we are bound by Interstate 95 on one side, and the rest of our community is surrounded by the Patapsco State Park. That's why our community was given an RC-5 designation. It is also important to understand that we need to change zoning law if we're going to expect all RC designations to change to, from septic to public sewer. The designated property was owned by another developer prior to the mate of family, and they tried to change the zoning, tried to upzone it. They tested the property. Our property, the property that's on our side of I-95 is 38 acres. They found 12 to 15 perccable areas to put septic systems. So, they have one house, they've got 38 acres, there's plenty of land and perccable land for them to have healthy sewers that are not going to impact the Patapsco River. The mates of family are real estate developers. In 2012, they proposed to this CZMP and this planning board an idea to build multifamily senior housing on this parcel. I hope, and I respect Chayton and his family, I appreciate them as neighbors, and I hope that this is their forever home. There is no reason to change this zoning, so I thank you all and appreciate your time here.
Thank you.
Chris Akkad followed by Hassan Hamad and Michael McCullough.
My name is Chris, and my family and I oppose 1-008 and 1-009. My wife and I moved onto Gun Road in 2015 looking for a quiet place to live. We were drawn to the Royal Field Gun Road. We liked the low volume of 45 homes, and zoning them would keep the street traffic low and neighbors safe. We live at the intersection of Keach and Gun. Our four-year-old daughter learned to ride her bike last summer, and we used to feel safe with her riding on Keach without four other homes along it. Constant truck traffic to prepare the land for rezoning and development has already made us stop using and enjoying Keach Road. The commercial vehicles clearly can't stay on the road, as evident by the ruts along Gun Road and Keach. Several neighbors have already been placing up fiberglass stakes in their yard, trying to keep the drivers on the road. With the current dump trucks, we have to pull over and stop for them to get by. Adding commercial establishments will only exacerbate this situation, especially for those not familiar with the area coming from the commercial establishments. Currently, people want to live on Gun Road, as a reputation with locals for being beautiful and secluded. This will be threatened by the consequences of the proposed zoning changes. We bought a subdivided property of two and eight acres. Instead of selling the two acre plot, we reforested it because we strongly believe this area should be preserved. We will continue to turn down developers asking for our plot and continue to support the movement against rezoning of Gun Road and Keach Road. If this issue is really about adding sewer to a single-family home in the interest of the environment, it should be obvious that the disruption of soil and native plants to gain access to sewer would have a larger environmental impact than a modern septic system for a single family. It's clear to me that the request is for future profit and development, and is not in the best interest of the community and the environment. Thank you for your time.
Thank you.
Next up, we have Hassan Hamad followed by Michael McCullough and Momen Abukter.
Folks, we clearly understand when you stand that you're in support of it. You don't need to clap because it's hard for Taylor, the people to hear the name she's calling. So standing is good enough. Thank you.
Good evening. My name is Hassan Hamad, and I'm here with regards to zoning issue 1-005. I serve as the president of the Islamic Society of Baltimore. Just a little bit about Islamic Society of Baltimore. We have been around in the Baltimore community and been part and parcel of the Catonsville, Windsor Mill, Woodlawn community for over 50 years. We are a organization that serves the community regardless of nationality, gender, age, or religion. Our community provides a free health clinic and has been serving everyone who is underinsured and less fortunate and can't afford healthcare, and that's regardless of religion, age, gender, nationality. We have a community playground that's being built for the entire community. We are recipients of a bond bill for a community learning center because we offer services to everyone regardless of nationality, age, gender, and so on. We are great neighbors that have been in the community for a very long time. Our neighbors, whether they're Muslim or not, we serve them when it comes to snow. We remove the snow from their driveways and sidewalks. We help deliver groceries to them, and we are constantly a beacon of support for our neighborhood and the community in general. It is unfair to assume we would discriminate on housing allocation, as said earlier, because we currently own property on Johnny Cake Road, the same road that we're looking to get the zoning, where we have non-Muslim tenants. We don't discriminate regardless of where you're from or your nationality or religion. Our school has non-Muslim staff and non-Muslim students that attended. We do not discriminate in any way, shape, or form, and we give out over half a million dollars in aid every year to anyone in our local community who needs food on the table or their BGE bill paid. We are building apartments that are designed for those who are seniors, those who are elders, and those who have disabilities, because we have none available in the community. They're all booked, and we're looking to do something to make it easy for anyone with access. All the buildings that are around in the Catonsville area, apartment buildings and complexes, not one of them has an elevator. We're hoping to change that because there's nothing available.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Next up, we have Michael McCullough followed by Momen Abukter and Paula Wolf.
Yes, my name is Michael McCullough. I am the president of the Healthorp Improvement Association. I am speaking in behalf of that group in opposition to issue 1-019. I'm also the zoning chairman for the Arbutus Community Association. I'm speaking in opposition of issue 1-026. So I do live, I do reside in the Healthorp Arbutus Community. As I said, I'm the president of the Healthorp Improvement Association, otherwise known as HIA, and HIA is opposed to this request. A 182 townhouse development adjacent to this property was approved two years ago and was required to have four acres of open space. It does have those four acres, but it's fractured into four separated areas with nearly all of it on steep terrain that is unsuitable as quality recreational space. The criteria that the county planner set forth as quality open space in the year 2000 was whittled down by the developer-friendly county council by 2017, to the point that that property that now qualifies as open space is suitable only for a billy goat. The development was approved using the whittled-down criteria. The residents of these 182 townhomes deserve better than this. They deserve reasonably level open space. The request was submitted for 1-019 in an obvious attempt to get an additional 31 townhomes incorporated with the 182 townhomes. The HIA wants the 12 acres to remain ML-zoned, thus protecting it from further housing development. Now on to issue 1-026. I'm the, as I said, I'm the zoning chairman for the Arbutus Community Association. I'm speaking with their behalf. We are opposed to that.
I'm sorry, sir. Time's up.
Yep.
Sorry.
Thank you.
Next up, we have Momen Abukter followed by Paula Wolf and Seth Marcel.
Good afternoon. So I'm here in support of 1-005, which is the rezoning to provide apartments for seniors for the Islamic Society of Baltimore. I'm here on behalf of myself and also my parents, who are elderly. We all know how vulnerable the senior population is, and especially coming as a first-generation American, and my parents being immigrants, there is this culture of your parents living with you and staying with you and being able to take care of them. But as you know, as many of you know, it's very difficult on a double income to be able to keep your parents housed and... to keep your parents housed and at home. Everybody believes that access is an issue until you have mobility needs. And I do believe that creating these apartments that would help these seniors be able to continue their relationship with a faith-based institution that has a gym, has activity. We have a very robust Golden Age Committee where these individuals get, seniors come, and they are able to partake in a lot of activities and be able to socialize, and we know how important that is to their health outcomes. And to be able to provide a unique model where the individuals can come in, have a gym, have their social activities, food, et cetera, would be a huge benefit to the community. I do just want to say that in terms of the, some of the concerns that would be raised, for example, traffic, again, this project, from my understanding, is that it would help those that are limited in their mobility. So I don't necessarily, they're currently being dropped off to these functions, to be able to have them and know that my parents could be right next to their mosque and be able to go and come back from it is very, very important. And also, some of the concerns around traffic, I know with any development study or any type of development, even after this process, there has to be a traffic impact study. So I do, you know, don't think that this would impact traffic, but I also believe that there's an opportunity to address that. And so that concludes my remarks, and I'm in favor of 1005. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Next up, we have Paula Wolf, followed by Seth Marcel and Edmund Torrey.
Thank you. I am speaking in opposition to issue 1-026 as it's framed. In 2000, I entered into a covenant with the then-owner of the property, Robert F. Wolf, who is no relation to me, for the purpose of Mr. Wolf's son, Robert L. Wolf, obtaining a motorcycle dealership. The covenant also included the Greater Arbutus Community Alliance, a 501(c)(3) organization established as an umbrella group. The covenant was created for the express purpose of the dealership acquisition and contained certain restrictions on hours of operation, route for test drives, and other factors. The Greater Arbutus Community Alliance subsequently disbanded by 2007. Robert F. Wolf is deceased. Robert L. Wolf was unsuccessful in obtaining the dealership but did maintain a motorcycle sales and repair facility on the site within the terms of the covenant. In 2021, Mr. Wolf suddenly died. The property was subsequently sold, and the covenant remains a part of the deed. However, the purposes for the zoning change, as well as the parties who initiated it, are no longer existent. I would like to recommend that the zoning be restored to BLCCC as it existed before the 2000 CZMP, when it was raised as issue 1-071. The entirety of East Drive, including the shopping center in the 5300 block, is zoned BLCCC. East Drive is Arbutus' main street. Businesses typical of BR zoning are generally incompatible with such a setting. East Drive has seen a resurgence as new business owners are taking a proactive role in shaping the commercial district. Setting all businesses on an even footing in terms of zoning and property utilization would seem to favor a BLCCC designation.
Thank you.
Nancy, can you ask what she, Nancy?
Next up, we have Seth Marcel, followed by-
Ma'am, you are speaking against it, correct? Yes.
I'm speaking in opposition to-
Exactly right. Some of the members asked.
Next up, we have Seth Marcel, followed by Edmund Torrey and Monica Poty.
Hi, I'm Seth Marcel. I'm a homeowner on Gun Road, and I'm opposed to the rezoning issue in 1008 and 1009. I'm one of the newer homeowners there. I've been here for about three years. Gun Road is a quiet little road, and that's what brought me there out of the city. I'm a commuter cyclist, so I tried to ride my bike to work, and after getting hit multiple times in the city, I wanted somewhere quiet and safe to live. And I thought I found that on Gun Road. It's been pretty good until recently, when the road has been just covered in dump trucks every day, all the time. It's been quite a bummer. Chris has already gone over this, so I'm going to try to not repeat myself. Also, the rezoning that is being addressed will not decrease the pollution if we're going to change it to a commercial installation, because that will bring more additional runoff and pollution with it. So the idea that by rezoning this will decrease pollution is a red herring. Everything else I wanted to say has already been said, so thank you.
Thank you for, thank you.
Next speaker. Next up, we have Edmund Torrey, followed by Monica Poty, and then John Gontrum.
Hello, my name's Edmund Torrey. I am speaking in support of issue 1005. I live at the junction of Johnny Cake Road and Adamsview Road, which, if there are traffic issues that would occur around the Islamic Society of Baltimore, it would happen right in front of my home. I'm a father of six, and I have elderly in-laws that live with me, and yet I stand in support of this zoning change for the property owned by the Islamic Society of Baltimore. Let me give you a couple reasons. First is that this is not some outside developer coming into our neighborhood. These are our neighbors, and they have vested interest in improving our neighborhood, and in fact, over time, they've demonstrated that. At least for the two-plus decades that I've lived at that location, they have improved the aesthetics and made the neighborhood more walkable and accessible. So very recently, they purchased an Auto Tags property that's on the corner of Dillon Heights and Johnny Cake Road that was essentially a junkyard. I mean, it was a full, overgrown junkyard. They've cleaned it up, and not only that, made the turn around that tough corner visible and accessible. On the other side of that property, of the property in question, they've improved and maintained the landscaping over time, and before that, they've advocated for sidewalks on Johnny Cake Road that did not exist prior. They have many community tree planting and cleanups, as well as involvement with Friends of the Chesapeake. They have food delivery to our neighbors in times of need, and they are our neighbors, and they care about our neighborhood. And so, as you all know, there's a process, and this is just the beginning. There will be ample opportunities for neighborhood engagement, and in fact, you know, as the prior spoke or said, the speaker said that environmental impact issues, traffic impact studies, and other local approvals would be needed, and most require some community involvement anyway. And in fact, what's interesting about the Islamic Society of Baltimore is that they've hosted multiple prior community engagements. So for example, when the courthouse was going up, multiple times, the meetings were occurring inside of the gymnasium at the Islamic Society of Baltimore. Also, there's an assisted living facility that was going to be five stories high, and it went to three, all because of the Islamic Society of Baltimore.
Thank you, sir.
I stand in support of it.
Next up, we have Monica Poty, followed by John Gontrum and Teresa Hanley.
I noticed that little man's been standing a lot.
My name is Monica Poty. I'm here to oppose issue 1008, 1009. I live at 5300 Keach Road, which is entirely surrounded by the 5301 Keach property, and we share a driveway together. We think that our safety and privacy will be compromised if the zoning is changed, and that would affect our everyday life. So myself, my husband, my seven children, and my mother-in-law, who lives with us, are each opposed to the zoning change 1008, 1009. Thank you.
Thank you.
Next speaker. Next up is John Gontrum, followed by Teresa Hanley and Bernard Kirby.
Members of the planning board, my name is John Gontrum. I'm an attorney at Whiteford, Taylor &amp; Preston. I'm here representing Cornelius Helfrich, who has an address of 16 locusts. I'm here basically in support of issue 1-021. Contrary to some of the statements that were previously made, Mr. Helfrich owns a 50-foot-wide lot that up until 1996 was zoned DR-5.5. It was proposed that a house identical in size to those on either side of it, including that of Ms. King, who testified, be built upon this property. The Board of Appeals granted variances for that house, with basically the planning department not being opposed to the variances. The planning board, the Board of Appeals also said that if the variances weren't granted, that given the existing zoning of the property, it could well be a taking-by-inverse condemnation of the property, because no other viable use could be made of the site. That case is now on appeal before the appellate courts, having been affirmed by the Circuit Court. Regardless of the outcome of that case, however, the DR-2 zoning on that site and on the other blocks is simply wrong. Not one lot in that area actually conforms to the strictures of DR-2. All of the lots are substandard, including the ones that have semi-detached units on it, and that frankly doesn't work. That means every property owner, because all but, every property but my clients has a house or unit on it, every property owner needs a variance, basically, to do any improvement or extension of their existing house. The properties always conform to DR-5.5 as the most likely zone. Putting DR-2 on it is an injustice to DR-2, which requires generally a 20,000-square-foot minimum lot size. It's false zoning. It creates something that was never intended to be there on properties that were never, ever designed under the DR-2 strictures.
Thank you.
Thank you for your consideration.
Next up, we have Teresa Hanley, followed by Bernard Kirby and Daniel McCarthy.
My name is Teresa Hanley. I live on Second Avenue in Lansdowne, and I service the secretary of the Lansdowne Improvement Association. Today, I stand before you to represent our community and express our concerns regarding the proposed rezoning of 4380 through 4382 Hollinsberry Road, known as CZMP issue 1-002. The Lansdowne Improvement Association is a nonprofit community association that is deeply committed to preserving the residential character of our neighborhood. Our mission resolves, revolves around fostering neighborhood pride, facilitating community engagement, and promoting homeownership. We have a history of advocating for the preservation of our community's residential character, as evidenced by our opposition to similar rezoning efforts in the past. Our concerns remain steadfast today, particularly regarding the potential rezoning that could eventually pave the way for another full-scale gas station at Hammond'sberry Road and Hollinsberry Road. In discussions with Councilman Pat Young, LIA has emphasized its concerns and suggested alternative options such as office space or multi-residential housing for the site. Our primary objective is to ensure the well-being and safety of our residents. Our opposition to the rezoning is driven by safety concerns. The clustering of gasoline stations at this intersection poses serious risks, such as fire hazards, heightened traffic accidents, and environmental pollution. Moreover, the introduction of another service station could diminish the quality of life for nearby residents and put the viability of other local businesses at risk. We firmly believe that an additional service station at this intersection is not in the best interests of our community. Therefore, the Lansdowne Improvement Association strongly opposes the rezoning issue in 1-002 if it facilitates the establishment of a service station on the site. We urge the planning board to prioritize the safety and well-being of our residents and reject this rezoning proposal or impose strict limitations on the type of businesses allowed on the site.
Thank you.
Next up, we have Bernard Kirby, followed by Daniel McCarthy and Thomas Putney.
Hello, my name is Bernard Kirby. I'm vice president of the Gun Road Historical Protective Association. I live at 500 Gun Road. I'm opposed to 1008 and 1009. My history with this area goes back to the 18th century. My family has lived up and down the Patapsco River Valley, from Woodstock to Catonsville to Ellicott City to Hailthorpe and Arbutus. So I know this area very well. History matters. A commitment to your neighborhood and community matters. It's been in my family legacy for over 200 years to live in this area and be part of this community. As part of the community of Gun Road, there's a commitment that we have to our neighbors to be a unified group and to work together to create a great neighborhood as a whole. Like the petitioner, we also have invested a lot in our homes. We've planted 400 trees for the landscape and to continue the legacy of the Patapsco Forest itself. We are committed to a fabric of the community by not developing our land. We could if we wanted to add another parcel house to it, but we've decided not to, to keep the fabric of the community together. This is not about character. This is not about forever homes. This is about a lack of transparency of intent and plan has never been presented to us of what would be done with that property, and changing the use of the community is in peril if the doors are opened for commercial development. Thank you.
Thank you.
Next up, we have Daniel McCarthy, followed by Thomas Putney and Sandra Algar.
Good evening. My name is Dan McCarthy. I'm with the Episcopal Housing Corporation, and I am here speaking in favor of CZMP issue 011. This is the rezoning of a plot parcel at Christ the King Church. It's in, right off of Security Square Boulevard. It is a six-acre parcel. It is a transition area between the commercial development that comes off of the mall to the east, to the residential, to the west. Working with the church, who wants to continue its worship community there, use the commercial zoning aspect of it to develop community facilities that would continue to benefit the property and the neighbors, and to develop some workforce housing, which will be in keeping with the development patterns that the county is pursuing in this Security Square area. I'm also here supporting issue number 012, which is at 901 Courtney Road. Again, this is another church parcel. We are seeking to develop a similar plan. We will maintain a worshiping community, create community facility there off of Wilkins Avenue, and also develop workforce housing, which we believe is one part of the mission that Holy Apostle and St. Stevens are carrying out in their community. Thank you very much.
Thank you, sir.
Next speaker. Next up, we have Thomas Putney, followed by Sandra Algar and Mary Elliott.
Yeah, hello. My name is Tom Poutney, and I'm in support of 1-003. Five years ago, my business partner, Dave and I, purchased 104 South Simington Avenue in Catonsville. It's an old Victorian, built over 100 years ago, and when we purchased it, it was overgrown, fallen into disrepair, looked like little or no investment had been made in decades. The building came with five licensed apartments, and we immediately began major interior renovations, including all-new kitchens, bathrooms, appliances. We removed oil furnaces, natural gas stoves, in favor of energy-efficient appliances, electrical and fire protection upgrades. After investing nearly $300,000 in improvements, we received our 2024 licenses for the apartments, along with a notice saying that they would not be issued beyond this point, the reason being the building sits on a quarter-acre lot, and the zoning is DR-5.5. The DR-5.5 will only permit two apartments on this quarter-acre lot. We've contacted three prior owners of the building, going back 60 years, and this building has been operated and licensed as five apartments since then. We'd just like to continue operating five apartments so that we have income to continue restoring, which is a beautiful relic in Catonsville.
Thank you, sir.
Next up, we have Sandra Algar, followed by Mary Elliott and Sheriff Selman, Selmy.
Hi, my name is Sandra Algar. I'm speaking in support of issue 1-011. I'm a lifelong member of Christ the King Church on that property. I grew up on the street adjacent to it, where my brother still lives. The church has been there for 60 years, and the structures that were originally built weren't meant to be permanent. It was the plan that a more significant structure will be built in the future. Over the 60 years we've been there, we've tried to serve the needs of the neighbors with different events at the church. We've had scout troops, NAA groups. We've hosted national night outs. We've provided Space for Life, which maintains group home living arrangements. We've had dances for them. We've hosted before-and-after care program there for many years with a preschool. We've hosted several meeting, several different HOAs in the area. In 2018, we started a group called Rise, which serves refugees and immigrants. We've started with helping with resumes and job searches, and then the pandemic came, and we realized people needed food. So we have, since the pandemic, served over 45,000 people food. We've hosted English language classes for adults and offered babysitting while they were there. We've hosted two additional congregations in our space. All this to say, the neighborhood's important to us. We feel we're part of the neighborhood, and we're there to bring help and assistance. We plan to stay and continue to serve. So now we're looking at our aging building and how we can use our gift of almost six ages to better serve our neighbors. Partnering with the elementary school has encouraged us to start a soccer clinic. Partnering with the elementary school has encouraged us to start a soccer clinic, which is using our outdoor space. And through the food deliveries, we really saw the need for more housing in the neighborhood that was affordable. We're seeing families that are working but living in very small quarters with many people. We'd like the opportunity to redevelop our space and include workforce housing in that plan, as well as a multi-use community space we could use for worship, continue to use for outreach, and also would be available for other community uses. Thank you.
Thank you. Next up, we have Mary Elliott, followed by Sheriff Silme and Noor Hamad.
My name is Mary Elliott, and I'm the Rector of Christ the King. I stand in support of rezoning requests for nineteen thirty Brookdale Road, issue one zero one one. I began my ministry in Woodlawn in two thousand and nine, and since I began, Christ the King has opened its space to embrace three active and very different congregations. The Episcopal congregation is multicultural with members from many parts of the world. Transformation Temple is primarily African and African-American. IPUL Baltimore is primarily Latino, and all worship there in Spanish. The congregations reflect the diversity of Woodlawn and Windsor Mills. Rezoning will allow for creating a space that is flexible enough for all the congregations to continue worshiping and expand our ministry opportunities. Rise, as Sam mentioned, is an umbrella outreach ministry that has many programs. The largest of our programs, as Sam mentioned, has fed forty-five thousand people since we began in June of two thousand and twenty. We feed approximately fifteen thousand people per year. Because of the number of people that continue to seek assistance, we anticipate continuing this program for the next fifteen to twenty years. Rezoning would allow us to adapt the buildings and grounds to better accommodate this need. Looking to the future, we also hope to potentially expand and partner with Chadwick Elementary to provide weekend food for families. Christ the King is committed to assisting neighbors in the present and in the future. We are aware of our strategic location, one that is close to reliable transportation and significant employment opportunities, and the need for additional housing options. We are also aware of our placement as a transitional space between the community commercial development on one side and residence on the other. We dream of a space for worship, community activities, and recreation. We are committed to listening to our neighbors so that together we may continue to create something new.
Thank you. Next up, we have Sheriff Silme, followed by Noor Hamad and David Donovan.
Good evening. I am Sharif Silme. I'm a council member at the Islamic Society of Baltimore and a proud resident of District One. I live on eleven oh seven Handy Avenue, just one mile away from the Islamic Society of Baltimore. The goal of the Islamic Society of Baltimore with respect to the zoning change is to enhance the livability such that we can have a healthy community in harmony with nature, a community that will have a resilient economy. As the largest employer in our zip code, over one hundred people are employed at the Islamic Society of Baltimore. We are adding to that on a daily basis in very practical terms. Social equity and strong regional ties through our many partnerships. And toward that end, I would also extend my support as a resident to the one zero one one that was just mentioned before me. The present property, subject to the zoning request, abudes a commercially-zoned former junkyard that has, thank God, now been cleared up, and we will continue to improve it and clear it up further. The present property also will be used to house any individual that is seeking affordable, nice living. We plan to make sure that the aesthetics of the property are kept green. We happen to own fifty acres of property in Baltimore County. Even after the change and the construction, thirty-three of which will remain green in perpetuity. So we are really proud of the work that's being done at the Islamic Society of Baltimore and the relationships that we have with our friends and neighbors, and we hope that we will earn and gain your support for this change. Thank you.
Next up, we have Noor Hamad, followed by David Donovan and Amanda White.
Hello, how are you? I'm here in support of I'm here in support of case one dash zero zero five. As a resident of Catonsville and someone who's been going and attending Islamic Society of Baltimore for the past thirty years, I've been watching them and seeing how they've grown, seeing the support they're giving to the community. They plan on building beautiful apartments for elderly, disabled. Me being someone who has a father, who is a senior now, who commutes to the mosque five times a day, having something nearby for him would be very helpful. If anything, I heard somebody saying about traffic. If anything, I believe it'll lessen traffic because that'll be less cars driving to the mosque. It'll be walkable for them. I basically just wanted to say that. I support one dash zero zero five.
Thank you. Next up, we have David Donovan, followed by Amanda White and Stephen Whalen.
My name's David Donovan. I'm a resident at four nineteen Gunn Road. I'm here in opposition of issue one zero zero eight and one zero zero nine, and in an effort to not be repetitive, that is all I will say. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Next up is Amanda White, then Stephen Whalen and Kimberly Shorter.
Hi, my name is Amanda White, and I am opposed to the zoning changes proposed by one zero zero eight and one zero zero nine. As I mentioned before, Amanda White, I live at four eleven Gunn Road, and my children are sixth-generation residents of Gunn Road. And I'm coming to you as a concerned mother. We had mentioned earlier from some of my friends that we are concerned about the influx of traffic on our very narrow and tiny road. Recently, there have been an increase in traffic from dump trucks dropping off dirt on the property mentioned. Some days, I feel like I am involuntarily placed in a game of chicken with dump trucks when I am on my way to work. If this is a preview of what will happen should the zoning change and we add three hundred-plus residents' properties to that area, I am really concerned about my eight-year-old and my ten-year-old walking to and from school along Gunn Road and perching themselves right there at the corner of Keach and Gunn Road. I am really concerned that this new zoning change would not conform to the Baltimore County Master Plan for two thousand and thirty. According to the master plan, our area, Gunn Road and portions of Keach Road, are considered a natural resource area. This makes sense considering the Avalon section of the Patapsco Valley State Park is located at the bottom of Gunn Road. I am very appreciative of the work that Chitana and Anna have done to the Keach Road property, but this is about preventing overdevelopment, preserving the natural resource status, preserving the character and history of Gunn Road and Keach Road. Thank you for your time and consideration.
Thank you. Next up, we have Stephen Whalen, followed by Kimberly Shorter and Eddie Watkins.
Madam Chair, members of the planning board, pardon the horse in my throat. I subscribe to the, and I'm here to speak about issue number one zero zero one. I subscribe to the theory that a picture is worth a thousand words, so I'm not going to do the latter. I'm simply going to tell you that I left at the back desk for your review a master plan for our proposed development. What we're asking in this phase is a small part, about five acres of an overall development of approximately thirty acres. And I think with the commentary that I've provided on there, it will answer your questions in terms of how this fits into the larger picture. So I wanted to provide this information. I'm sorry, we can't have one in front of you right now so that I could discuss it in more detail, but I think you'll find that this is helpful in reviewing what we're asking for and what the overall plan will look like. Thank you.
Sir, you're in support or opposition?
Well, I'm the developer, so yes.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Next up, we have Kimberly Shorter, followed by Eddie Watkins and Joseph Ho.
Hi, good evening. Thank you for this opportunity to speak. I am speaking in favor of issue one zero one one, the Episcopal Housing Corporation's rezoning request. I will not repeat what you may have already heard from the others who have spoken in support of it, other than to say, Christ the King has been a tremendous partner to our community. I have been in the community for over twenty years, lived and worked there, and Christ the King has allowed us to have our homeowners' association meetings there. They've served the community, as they previously shared, in feeding the homeless and providing clothes and resources to people, and we want to see them be able to grow that, and we want to partner with them in the future. So we're definitely in support of that. I'm definitely in support of that. And I also would like to speak on issue one zero zero four and one zero zero seven against both of those issues. The first one is seventy-one hundred Security Boulevard LLC. The second is Security Office Park LLC. Both of them want to be rezoned to add gas stations to those properties. Our area is oversaturated with gas stations and storage facilities, as many people already know. And unless there is an effort to try to make this part of the county the Woodlawn-Security-Mall corridor of the county, the gas station and storage facility capital world, I don't think we need two more gas stations across the street from each other. We already have seven within a two-mile radius. We don't need any more. We've had issues with Carroll Fuel, which is on Rolling Road with the crime there, and a lot of people, we've got together, we met with Carroll Fuel owners and the managers, and we discussed with them the crime issues, and we also shared with them that because of the crime and because of the safety, we go elsewhere to get our gas. So adding two gas stations is not going to make us want to spend our money in the community to buy gas if we can't solve the problem at Carroll Fuel. So thank you for your time and your consideration.
Thank you. We were informed that Eddie Watkins is sick, so we will move on to Joseph Ho, and then it will be Scott Luco and James Moersberger.
Good evening. I'm Joseph Ho, and I'm here to oppose issue one dash zero zero two. A zoning reclassification request has been made for the properties known as forty-three eighty and forty-three eighty-two Hammond's Ferry Road. The property is currently owned by Tim Potter, who is a Howard County resident and not a member of our community. It's located in the First Councilmanic District. The property currently has and has been known to have uncut grass, trash, weeds, fallen trees, and appliance piled up, used appliances built up on the property. As bordering property owners, we are opposed to the reclassification of these properties to anything other than DR five-point-five or conservation land. The properties are located in a mature and established community. The properties are contiguous with numerous residential backyards. A zoning change would cause irreversible harm to neighboring property values, would place neighboring children within feet of twenty-four-hour commercial activity, and would disrupt the peace of our community. At this time, there are more than enough commercial zone properties in the area. Additional commerce at the intersection of Hammond's Ferry and Hollins Ferry Road is not supported by the community or roadways. The intersection of Hammond's Ferry and Hollins Ferry is known to have excessive public safety problems, so it would be made worse by expanding commerce into our residential community. This zoning request conflicts with the Baltimore County Master Plan and would bring with it numerous environmental problems. The proposed zoning change is inconsistent with the needs of Lansdowne and Edinterres communities. Properties along the sides and rears are designated DR five-point-five. In addition, the majority of bordering properties is mature residential DR five-point-five. Finally, this zoning change request from five-point-five to BL is inconsistent with the goals of Lansdowne and further harms our older, established community. Accordingly, residents oppose this change, oppose issue one point zero zero two, and request that Tim Potter's request for reclassification be denied.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Next up, we have Scott Luco, followed by James Moersberger and Catherine Welch.
Good evening. My name's Scott Luco. I live at five oh five Gunn Road, and I stand in firm opposition to issues one zero zero eight and zero zero nine. I echo my neighbors in opposition. I don't have anything more to say to that. Other than that, I need to express my shock that this hearing was transformed into a forum for character assassination. Last summer, my wife and I, Ann, invited Mr. Mate into our home to hear him with an open mind on his issue to move the urdle. When I asked him if that would enable a zoning change and development, he firmly cried, "No, no, never. This is our forever home, and we're not going to try to change the zoning." And here we are. Less than three months after that, the petition was put in, and the trucks started rolling. So that's all I have to say. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Next up, we have James Moersberger, followed by Catherine Welch and Dan Coe.
Good evening. My name is James Moersberger. I'm here to oppose issue one zero zero, it's two zeros and a five, one zero zero five. So the Islamic Society of Baltimore lives around the corner and down the street, the mosque. I applaud the members of that society for their heart in this matter. However, I've lived on Dillon Heights, which is across the street from one section of this parcel that they want to put apartments on. I've been there since nineteen eighty-five. I've seen the Islamic Society grow by leaps and bounds. That's great. But I've also seen an increase in traffic. It is, they're narrow roads, especially Dillon Heights is one block long. It's a ninety-degree bend to Johnny Cake, so there's a blind spot there. During the Islamic prayer days and their high holy days, some of which run for weeks, the traffic is nonstop. Last summer, I was rear-ended trying to back into my driveway. I had a police officer tell me once, "You should always back into your driveway so that you don't cause an accident when you're backing out." I got rear-ended from someone who was trying to get to the mosque in a hurry. Just the other week, I turned off of Crosby Road onto Woodbridge Road, which is three blocks from Dillon Heights. There was a long line of cars coming from the mosque, coming to Crosby Road to turn off. And imagine my surprise as I'm riding up the road, here come three cars in my direction because they were impatiently, they were too impatient to wait till they got to the cross street.
Thank you, sir.
And so, thank you. I would ask you to oppose it.
Next up, we have Catherine Welch, followed by Dan Coe and Debra Donovan.
Hello, I am here in support of one dash zero zero eight and one dash zero zero nine. I'm a resident of Catonsville. We live around the corner from Chithen and Anna with my mom, my husband, and our six-year-old son. So we know Anna and Chithen to be generous, thoughtful, kind, community members. These are the kind of neighbors anyone would love and appreciate. They give back, they make decisions with the good of the community and the environment as a top priority. So I support the rezoning of the land for two main reasons. Previous speakers have covered adequately the environmental impact, but I would like to focus on something incredibly important. Please take a look over here at the almost all-white contingent opposing this issue. This is not a coincidence. Changing the zoning from urban to rural after it had been urban for nearly fifty years was also not a coincidence, but instead, a retaliation to a brown-skinned person purchasing this property. Pretending that this property is rural after being urban for decades and abusing I-95 is frankly ridiculous. Any development of this land would be thoughtful and considerate. Property owners who are planting acres of orchards are clearly not planning on hundreds of houses. Property owners reforested are not greedy developers. I put it to you that the Metz's are your neighbors who care about this neighborhood. In terms of dump trucks, they are part of a district-approved soil conservation project. On a more serious note, one of the prior speakers drove extremely drunk past fifteen children to evade to a Chathan’s house and tell him racial stereotypes are generally true. They had to come from somewhere. Thus, you can see the hand-wringing over safety.
Thank you.
Is largely performative. Thank you.
Next speaker is Dan Coe, followed by Debra Donovan and Gary Landsman.
Hi. Thank you. I’m also in support of 1-008 and 1-009. You know, Anna and Chathan love their neighborhood, and they’re sorry about the disruption and all the dump trucks. They, you know, they saw the potential of the land. They dream big. They did some big projects, you know, especially when they first moved in. They were a lot, they weren’t every day, and they’ve invited, you know, folks over there to see that, and, you know, we’ve all been enjoying it, too. It’s an amazing space they’re turning it into, and they’ve tried to show them that there isn’t, you know, space to put in houses so densely. They have, you know, very sloped land and a lot of intermittent streams and large setbacks. You can’t put a bunch of houses in there. They’ve planted orchard on some of the only flat land they have, which you wouldn’t do if you were going to develop. And even if, you know, we’re going to try to compact the land, it takes over 50 years to do that, and it wouldn’t be suitable to build in that much time. They’re trying to fill in with the dump trucks, they’re trying to fill in some of the hill next to the highway to dim some of the noise, and yeah, I’ll leave it at that. Thank you.
Thank you.
Next up, we have Debra Donovan, followed by Gary Landsman and Charles Yates.
Hi. Thank you for taking the time to hear me. I’m speaking in opposition of the zoning change request for 1-008 and 1-009. My husband and I also purchased our forever home, and it’s an investment for our children as well. This zoning change is totally opposite of the master plan 2030 for the county. And as an educator in the county, I have firsthand experience of our building being overfilled and overcrowded, and opening up that to more residents and a higher enrollment is not in the best interest of our area. In addition with that, as a resident, I’m concerned with the traffic on Gunn Road, Keach Road, Silver Spring Road, and Rolling Road, as it is a congested area during multiple times of the day, and it’s just a major safety issue. And I would just like to add, because I am trying not to take this personally, I’ve had nice interactions, but you can disagree with someone and not be racist, and it’s very difficult to sit here and be beaten up when you haven’t done anything. Thank you.
Next, we have Gary Landsman, followed by Charles Yates and James Rudy.
Hi. My name is Gary Landsman, and I’m here in opposition of 1-021. Please note that the single support for this change tonight is supported by an attorney representing a single owner, offering an absurd interpretation of current zoning to support just his want. These blocks are what is Catonsville in every way. We moved here for this. Please come see for yourself if you don’t already know what charming, family-friendly Catonsville looks like. Who wants to alter this charming community? No one that lives there, that’s for sure. There is absolutely no advantage to increasing density in this area, except perhaps to increase the profitability of developers. That should be totally obvious at this point. Change the many to support the one, and once done, every sale on these blocks will go to developers. Goodbye, charming Victorian neighborhood. There are certainly disadvantages. There’s already traffic issues during rush hours, beginning especially with school departures. Just try exiting onto Frederick Road from Newburgh on any school afternoon post-rush hour, or two post-rush hour. Speeding on Newburgh is a constant issue. Pedestrian safety with traffic is already a consideration, and apparently, there’s already requested county office for a pedestrian safety study. What will happen when we add all of these new homes? The intersection of McGruder and Newburgh sees traffic accidents at a high rate. I could not find statistics, but I’m guessing at least 12 per year we sit right on this corner and hear them. You can’t resolve this traffic as is, and you’re suggesting as much as four times the new vehicles on just these blocks as developers move in. With Newburgh limited street parking, where are all these vehicles going? We can’t even get a small localized grocery to support the immediate town, and this town can’t provide for any increased density. Where are all these people shopping? Charming, old-school architecture, part of the embedded Catonsville community, would be destroyed for what benefit to community? The entire aged neighbor.
Thank you, sir.
Next up, we have Charles Yates, followed by James Rudy and Malika Pipkin.
Yeah, hello. I’m here to speak against 1-005. Like I said, Charles Yates, I live directly across the street on Dillon Heights Avenue, so naturally, I’m worried about all the development that they’d like to do. One, for property values. Two, we’ve lived there, raised our kids there. I own the home outright, and when I did the numbers after we got the information in the mail and told my wife, the first thing she said is, “We need to move if they approve this.” And that’s how strongly, you know, we feel about this in the negative. Not everybody feels the same about ISB, you know. If you’re part of the community, feel good about it. If not, maybe not. We’ll tell you, we talk about traffic because, like Jim said, I mean, with the growth of the mosque and the Islamic school on the road, the counties recently had to put in speed humps to slow people down and to try to keep the children safe, putting in sidewalks, too. There was never sidewalks before, you know, back when we first moved in, back in the early 2000s. The, during Fridays and high holy days, the road becomes untenable. We can’t even park there if we want to get out on time to work. We have to park in a separate community and walk now. So, if you go ahead and approve, right now, they’ve approved for about 26 housing units on that 4.8-acre lot. If you approve the change, they’re going to go to 78 housing units, and if you do the math, I mean, and I know, you know, you can say whatever you want. Once the zoning’s changed, you know, you can do whatever you want with it, and you can’t guarantee who’s going to be there, how many cars, how many people, and what, you know. So, if you do the math, you know, nationally, each household has about 1.8 cars, which I think is a little low, but that’s going to add, what is it, you know, 140 cars to my road that you can’t even get two cars passed on a bad day. They have to wait for each other. So, yeah, 10 seconds to go. I did want to say, I really appreciate getting the notice in the mail, and I really appreciate you letting us come up here and just talk about this and have a say. It’s really encouraging, so thank you. Appreciate it.
Thank you, sir.
Next up, we have James Rudy, followed by Malika Pipkin and Chase Donovan.
James Rudy is not going to be here.
Next up, we have Malika Pipkin.
And who else do we have?
Nope. Next up, we have Chase Donovan, followed by Barbara King and Iris Anderson Grizzle.
I’m Chase Donovan, a resident of Gunn Road. I do want to point out something that is very important. If you look at everybody standing behind me, these are all the people that are going home to Gunn Road at the end of the evening. You look over here, they’re all gone. Where did they go? They went back to their own neighborhoods. They’re not impacted by this decision. The other, you know, disgusting characterization that the community is racist because we’re opposed to the CZMP change, I hope that you guys can see through that fallacy right away. That is just something that reeks of desperation from somebody that clearly has a losing argument. The other thing, these alligator tears about this is for the good of the future of the county, you know, they want to do the CZMP change because, well, who knows, decades down the road, maybe we’ll have a need for this development. That’s what this process is for. That’s why we come here every four years to reassess the need for these zoning laws. We don’t need to make this gigantic leap to potentially explode a community of 43 homes to over 300 right now, tonight. There’s no reason for that. The, you know, the, yeah, I’m not going to rehash all the other arguments that were made, but we have a process. If the needs for the zonings change, we have this process to revisit this every four years. This isn’t a one-and-done thing that needs to be decided tonight. It’s not about words. Words don’t matter. Laws matter. It doesn’t matter what he says about promising not to develop. As soon as these zoning laws are changed, there is no recourse, and he can do whatever he wants with this property. Thank you.
Thank you.
Next up, we have Barbara King, followed by Iris Anderson Grizzle and Sam Cooper.
I am Barbara King, a resident of the community, and I’m against Issue 1-005. A zoning change to DR 16 would allow 16 residential units per building. That could bring up to 160 more families into a community that is already overwhelmed with traffic. Consider the damage to existing roads with the addition of heavy construction equipment traffic required for building the units. This combination results in unacceptable and unsafe conditions along these roads. The roads in the general vicinity are single-vehicle passage. Johnny Cake Road and Adams View are the only roads that consistently have single-lane two-way traffic. Schools in the area are already operating over state capacity. I believe that the schools would be negatively impacted by the addition of school-aged children that would be placed into the already overcrowded facilities. The water systems in this area are already overtaxed and in failing condition. We constantly have water main breaks. If this many additional families are added to this system, it would be catastrophic for this community. The property in question is frequently used for parking. They also use state easement property for parking. They do not need to bring more people and vehicles into this neighborhood. They need to provide adequate parking for their current and future faith community. For these reasons, I respectfully ask that you do not approve zoning change for this property. Thank you.
Thank you.
Next, we have Iris Anderson Grizzle, followed by Sam Cooper and Luanne Motley.
My name is Iris Anderson Grizzle, and I am in opposition of the 1-008 and 1-009 zoning change requested at 5301 Keach Road. I live at 303 Gunn Road, and I’m a fourth-generation Gunn Road resident, and my daughter, who is here tonight, is a fifth generation to live and reside in the house at 303. My family members have been stewards to the land on our end of Gunn Road since the late 1800s. My parents, my grandparents, my great-grandparents took meticulous care of the property, and in return, it’s been at the heart of many memories with the kind of space that every kid dreams of having, fields and hills and streams. My daughter, already at seven years old, proclaims how much she appreciates the space that we have to climb trees and ride bikes and lay in the grass, all without a neighbor’s house in view, because of the acreage that many of us have to enjoy. Our property borders the Keach Road property with power lines dividing us through the valley. A change in our landscape would be detrimental to what we love and appreciate about our property and Gunn Road with a proposed zoning change and the potential of not only clearing the land with the potential of dense businesses or apartments, but also creating environmental havoc on an already delicate ecosystem that feeds into the Tapsco State Park. I have had nothing but positive interactions with the property owner and his wife, and I embrace them joining the community, and I can assure you that our opposition has nothing to do with the color of anyone’s skin, as they are vibrant and creative individuals. However, we still have not received an explanation from them, despite many opportunities for neighborly and friendly open dialogue to explain such a detrimental and drastic zoning change. Our street cannot support the type of infrastructure required for such a large-scale project, nor should it. The bucolic landscape of peace and beauty that we currently have would be forever changed, and our environment would be negatively impacted. It would be extremely irresponsible. Thank you very much.
Next up, we have Sam Cooper, followed by Luanne Motley and Christopher Lind Payne.
Good evening. My name is Sam Cooper, and I’m here to speak in favor of Issue 1-003. I purchased my home about a year ago, and I live three houses down from the property in question. I love the additions that this apartment building makes to the character of our street.
Sir, can you speak up a little bit?
Yes. I’m sorry.
1-002.
Yes, I’m sorry. 1-003.
3.
I love the character that this apartment building, being converted from an old house, brings to our street. This house has been split into apartments for the last 60 years. It’s currently being rented out, and as far as I know, compliant with all rental permitting. I don’t believe that parking on our street would be an issue. Our one-way street has parking on both sides, and every house in the street has a driveway. There have been times where all five units in the house were occupied with people who owned cars. In the same time period, gas line construction on Frederick Road removed all of the parking along the street, which is only two houses down from the property in question. Even so, every resident on the street was able to regularly park, not only in their driveways, but also had a space in front of their house. The house also has two bus lines adjacent to it, the CityLink Purple, which runs frequently, and the UMC bus, which is free for students. Students make up a large population of the renters in the area, and being a UMC alum, I know how difficult to disfind housing off-campus and how important it is. I believe this house brings amazing character to our street, and it would be heartbreaking to see five units that are rented affordably being demolished and instead turned into one oversized 4,000-foot single-family house. Thank you.
Thank you.
Next, we have Luanne Motley, followed by Christopher Lind Payne and Kimberly Shorter.
Good evening. I’m here in favor of Issue 1-003, the rezoning of 104 South Simmington Avenue. Right now, 104 South Simmington Avenue is unfortunately zoned as DR 5.5, which doesn’t make very much sense because it’s a 4,000-square-foot home and has historically been apartments for 60 years. By changing it to DR 16, as it should be, that on a .29-acre plot would grant them four apartments. They currently have five that have reasonably maintained and are owned by really responsible, kind, caring landlords who take the time to improve their property and make apartments that are comfortable to live in, and they provide for their tenants. As we all know, affordable housing is a serious crisis in this country, and especially in our community. Affordable housing has been far and few between, especially in Catonsville. These landlords provide really comfortable housing, beautifully well-done. They maintain the integrity of a 1900s home while guaranteeing their tenants have a comfortable place to live. Living in this house allowed me and my partner to buy a home around in the community. We were able to live in the apartments, save, meet our community, meet our neighbors, become a part of the Catonsville community, and then eventually move out and buy our own home, and that’s what I assume most people would love to be able to do. But unfortunately, it’s not always an option with there’s such a lack of affordable housing. In order for these wonderful landlords to continue to maintain a historic home and continue to put money into it even after they’ve considerably done so, it must be rezoned to DR 16. Thank you.
Thank you.
Next up, we have Christopher Lind Payne.
As you said, my name is Christopher Lind Payne, and I’m with the Episcopal Diocese of Maryland. I also stand in support of work that we’re doing in collaboration with the Episcopal Housing Corporation and its two issues, 1-011 and 1-012. This is on Christ the King and Holy Apostle Saint Stephen. These two communities, I’ve gotten to know very well over numerous years working with them. These are congregations that have a deep love and commitment for their communities, and I’ve been inspired to watch them engage in ministry and in the deep-listening process that’s begun as part of the CZMP. They are really seeking to love their neighbor as themselves in an ethic that I think was really challenging me to grow as a leader, and I’m grateful for the work that you all are doing as a zoning board in this. As we work with them, we’re trying to imagine what workforce housing and community facilities could look like alongside worshiping communities, and so many congregations are struggling, not just in the Episcopal Church or the Lutheran Church, but in all varieties of denominations and places of worship. How do we figure out how to create community and to come together across all sorts of dividing lines? So, as these two congregations work with the Episcopal Housing Corporation to submit a zoning change that would upzone it to BLCCC, I think it’s really, it’s grounded in a deep-listening process, a process that I hope is going to provide much-needed workforce housing in those communities and be able to continue to do the work around food justice and community support that they’ve been so invested in for decades. Not only do I serve the Episcopal Diocese of Maryland, but I live in Catonsville in this district. Five generations of my family have been here, and I’ve seen so much change, and I’m excited to see what’s possible here. So, thanks for your support.
Thank you.
Our next speaker was actually a duplicate entry, so our next speaker Our next speaker was actually a duplicate entry, so our next speaker will be Laura Cook, followed by Paul Dongara and Kathy Sutherland.
I'm Laura Cook, here to speak about issue 1-016, Woodlawn Bus Company's request to rezone from residential to business, a one-acre piece of property that is directly north of my property. My primary concern with this request is that there is an existing paper road that has been surveyed for turning into a road. I've left the twenty copies with staff for you. The paper road could have served that one acre when it was proposed for residential development. Now that this one acre is being proposed for Woodlawn Bus Company to park buses, my concern is that if that paper road is developed, running from the Norhurst neighborhood with the very narrow streets, down the back of the property of my neighbors, who have about a 20-foot standoff from that paper road, school buses, construction vehicles, which are also on the Woodlawn Bus Company, will be up and down that road through our neighborhood. Very concerning about the noise and the pollution from those vehicles, as well as the fact that there are beautiful mature trees on that paper road, which has been in existence on paper for about forty years, but never needed to be developed. The request for rezoning for the Woodlawn Bus Company, I would ask that it not be approved unless that paper road goes through the road closing process is turned over to us and to the adjacent property owners, so that it cannot be developed into access for buses from the Norhurst neighborhood. We're also quite concerned about the fact that Woodlawn Bus Company got permission in 1993 to park employee vehicles only, no buses, near the neighbors, and there are now seventeen feet buses parked seventeen feet away from residential houses, so we would ask that be held to the 50-foot standoff.
Thank you for your time.
Thank you very much.
Next, we have Paul Dongara, followed by Kathy Sutherland and Christopher Bingaman.
How's everybody doing tonight? My name's Paul Dongara. I'm a thirty-year resident of District One, but tonight I'm here as an executive committee member of Sierra Club, Baltimore County Group, the leading environmental group in the county, and I'm here to comment on many issues through the lens of smart growth, the required strategy to combat catastrophic climate change. The following issues are for development projects that Sierra theoretically generally supports, but we cannot, however, support these positions, because by doing so creates byright opportunities for continued car-centric approach to development. Simply put, these locations are too important to leave us guessing what will come when a zoning change occurs. To achieve the quality and character of walkable transit-oriented development, these should be done through a PUD process. In addition, such a process will also ensure meaningful community benefits, especially since several of the properties in question reside in areas that will benefit from state-enabled financing tools. I'd like to say that Sierra and me personally are happy to help engage the community, find common ground and mutual benefit, to promote responsible development through the PUD process. These issues are 1-01, 1-004, 1-007, 1-011, 1-022, 1-006, 1-013, 1-020, 1-010, 1-012. The following issues are things that we oppose because of the destruction of open space that provides essential flood protection, uses sewer capacity for development inconsistent with the master plan, threatens contributing structures in a nationally-recognized historic district, and in one key seeks to prevent smart growth exactly where it should go.
Thank you, sir.
Okay, and please read my other issues. Thanks.
Next up, we have Kathy Sutherland, followed by Christopher Bingaman and Brian Naparty.
Hello. I am here to vote against issue number 1020, the rezoning request by a developer to rezone the former St. Timothy's Church on Ingleside Avenue. I would request that this not go through. This is a historic building. It's a church from the 1800s, and it's really disappointing to me that more people aren't here. We do not need more building in our area. My street is so crowded now that it's ridiculous. My husband's been rear-ended, our car's been totaled, traffic comes up on our sidewalk in the morning. It was my understanding that there was an interest from a contract purchaser to rezone the property, but he has reneged on that. But it doesn't mean within the next couple of years that if the zoning goes through that someone else couldn't come over there and build. We enjoy the neighborhood. People walk over there, kids ride their bicycles. We just do not need that to be redeveloped. The contract purchaser was going to build eleven apartments inside the church. The interior was going to be redone, but again, that is not going to happen, but it doesn't mean another developer can come in and want to change the zoning. So I'm a fourth-generation Catonsville resident myself. We've had family members from the 30s get married there, and I would just hate to see that happen, and I hope Councilman Young would hopefully try to permit that from happening, and I appreciate your time and consideration. Thank you.
Thank you.
Next, we have Christopher Bingaman, followed by Brian Naparty and Joanne Reed.
Yeah, my name is Chris Bingaman. I'm in opposition of issue 1008 and 1009. Thank you guys for coming out. You guys have been up there a long time, so I appreciate that, you listening to us I do live in my dream house with an incredibly strong neighborhood. The only people that I've heard that are trying to change the zoning for are mostly don't live there, maybe two people out of that crowd. Everybody else lives there, understands it. My property is adjacent to this 5301 Keach property. That means my whole backyard is against this area that wants to be developed. There is a 1,000-foot ravine, maybe 200 feet deep, between our houses. This is the Patapsco State River, an inlet to that river. So if you guys could look at the plan and see that they're trying to put a very high-density set of residences on a very narrow cul-de-sac road, if you will, it would do a lot of damage, and it is, yeah, I don't think it's good. Can you hear me? Did I, okay.
Yes.
Yeah, I'm not used to the speaker that much. I've also never been approached by this developer. Our properties are right against each other, and my door's always open. I'm always out in the backyard. I'm always there. I do ask you to look at the elevation change in the zoning and see what it does to the surrounding environment and the Patapsco River Valley, and I appreciate you guys coming out and listening to us. Appreciate that. If I have to email or send letters, I'll do that. Thank you.
Thank you.
Next up is Brian Naparty, followed by Joanne Reed and Karen Holmes.
Good evening. I'm Brian Nipperd. I'm representing the Central Catonsville Neighborhood Association, and we are coming to oppose item 1-020, which is a request to turn the zoning from 5.5 to 5.16. This affects a property at Ingleside and Frederick Road, where St. Timothy's Church is currently still standing. So we have looked at traffic issues. We have looked at the loss of green space and the noise and continuing deterioration of the neighborhood. If this zoning change is allowed, we request your kind consideration, again, to oppose this request. Thank you very much.
Thank you, sir.
Next up, we have Joanne Reed, who I believe left. Karen Holmes, followed by Teresa Dreier and Bree Summerfield.
Good evening, everyone. My name is Karen Holmes, and I'm here to say no when Islamic Society's requests to install at least 200, but with the potential of 500-plus, should they start moving in a family of four, for 500-plus new people within a four-acre space. This will definitely overpopulate our area, currently designed to accommodate sixteen families comfortably. The roadwork that is currently being completed does not allow for the constant flow of traffic that the overpopulation of this quiet, established community will create. For example, we just added speed bumps and narrowed the intersections to slow down the traffic. But I personally reside at 729 Crosby Road, located at the T-shaped intersection crossed with Woodbridge Road, the common outlet for most people exiting the subject area. There are constant accidents here, many times with the cars ending up on my front lawn. My family has experienced the wreck of five of our own personal vehicles at this location. Speed bumps are not an option on Crosby Road, as this is a snow emergency route. This already overabundant cause of congestion happens daily at the beginning and the end of the school day from the Islamic Society School for at least an hour each time of day. I have been a member of this community for 44 years, myself, my family for 51 years, and allowing an organization's business aspirations to disrupt what we have built, established, and maintained is unacceptable. Thank you.
Thank you.
Next, we have Teresa Dreier, followed by Bree Summerfield and Maxwell Bloch.
Good evening. I'm here as an opposition for 1-012, brought in a 901 Courtney Road property. I live across the street from there. I lived in that property for approximately 30 years. The church has been a great supporter of the community, and no way I'm trying to disregard the church, but I have a serious concerns that they're looking to put in approximately 70 units into an area of about four and a half acres. This is an existing area that was built up in 1956 with limited parking, as it is for our current residents. My understanding is that the parking from the county allows .75, sorry, the very limited parking would be incorporated for the church and this building with approximately 70 units. The traffic would then have to exit off this old Maiden Choice Lane, which is a very, very, very narrow road, come down through the existing community, and then exit out onto Wilkins Avenue off of Wilton Drive. That area already has an existing number of, significant number of accidents, T-bone accidents, and I feel like this is going to be a serious problem for the traffic. They would also have to exit out onto Maiden Choice Road, where the traffic already backs up just prior to the old Victorian home at Wilkins and Maiden Choice. So I would please ask that you do a lot of, your civil engineers are going to be extremely busy. You're going to be trying to squeeze a large elephant into a small pup tent in this particular area, so that the traffic's going to be horrible. We're going to have problems with our existing home values, putting that existing large number of people into this small area. And so also consideration, looking at the additional number of people for the schools. Thank you.
Thank you.
Next up, we have Bree Summerfield, followed by Maxwell Bloch and John Deason.
Good evening. My name is Bree Summerfield. I am opposed to 1005. My family has been in Catonsville since the mid-1800s, one of the original African-American families in the area, so we have seen growth and good planning throughout the years. I am currently living about two blocks away from 1005, where they're thinking about building over four acres of apartments. For that, this is strictly for infrastructure and traffic. The roads that currently, Dillon and Johnny Cake is not an intersection. It is one road, one road with no sidewalks, one country road, if you will. This road, one road to the left feeds into two other communities, small roads that lead to Rolling Road. The other, to the right, leads to Crosby, which is a medium-sized road, Crosby Road, and that is already dense with traffic. Doing this for the, it's two ways all through the community, and when you have to go through the community, you have to pull over so one can go through and the other one can pass. The infrastructure is not there for such a development to happen. Rezoning this would create a lot of traffic in the whole area, not just that one road. The entire area of Westview Park was built for communities with homes. I, again, am opposed to 1005. Thank you.
Thank you.
Next, we have Maxwell Bloch, followed by John Deason and Dora Norman.
Good evening, Maxwell Bloch. I'm a resident of the Southmont Road neighborhood in Catonsville. I'm here speaking opposing issue 1-020. Lifelong resident of Catonsville, first-time homeowner as of 2019. Had a few months in 2019 summer as my wife and I were surveying homes in the area. I self-proclaimed myself as an expert in neighborhoods around the area to my lovely Montgomery County transplant spouse, and we're now raising our first child. Ironically, the only way I knew about this hearing was because of how walkable Ingleside Avenue is today. I enjoy taking my two-year-old on walks down Ingleside Avenue, holding his hand, visiting Charles's Bakehouse, Dunkin' Donuts, going into the farmer's market. And the properties at the proposed location are going through a bit of a transformation right now. I don't know the whole history, right, but it was an active church, and that church has left, and it's now under a new stewardship, and it's been changing rapidly over the last couple of years. And this is the first time I've come out to speak about it, because there's been a lot going on the last three years. I'm here in support of adaptive reuse of our neighborhoods, of finding solutions to affordable and more housing and mixed use, but the character of this is changing so rapidly, and I'm here to express that I think this is an improper response to a real issue that needs more community input, transparency, and involvement, not just happening to walk by a sign on my way home one day from somewhere in Catonsville. Also, over in neighborhoods near and dear to my heart, I briefly express opposition to 021, 011, and 012.
Thank you.
Next, we have John Deason, followed by Dora Norman and Gerard Wisnewski.
Good evening. John Deason intended to stand here in support of 1010 and 1012, but he had to leave to attend to a family matter. Thanks.
Thank you, sir.
Next up, we have Dora Norman. Moving on, we have Gerard Wisnewski, followed by Robert Blackburn and Aaron Gerlings.
I'm here in opposition to zoning 101-018. This is the redevelopment of the Quest Medical Facility. They got a rezoning sign there. We don't know what's going on with that. It's pointed right at my house, house is 2108 21 Turn. From my understanding, they want to make an egress, excuse me, exit out of there, and anything coming at it, all those headlights will be pointing at my house. We have not seen an architectural schematic or outlay of what this thing's supposed to look like. What are they going to do with this property? Why do they want it rezoned? That's why I'm here. It's bad enough at 5:30 in the morning plus, we got heavy traffic down there on a 13 to 17-degree incline, but these heavy trucks, semis and everything are using brake brakes at 5:30 in the morning on a 25 mile-an-hour speed limit. They're using brake brakes. I think they do it for spite, but anyway, that's my problem. But until we see an architectural blueprint or sketch of what this development's going to look like, do not rezone that commercial. Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
Next, we have Robert Blackburn, followed by Aaron Next, we have Robert Blackburn, followed by Erin Gerlings and Elizabeth Lee.
Hello. I'm in oppose 1-016. I live at 700 Myers Drive, also here to speak on behalf of my parents. I live at 702 Myers Drive, and we share about 300 feet of property line between us and Woodlawn Motor Coach, who is the company that's trying to get this property rezoned so they can expand their parking lot for their buses. The lights, the noise, and unfortunately, the smell of diesel at 5 o'clock in the morning when they're starting up somewhere between 50 to 100 buses that are already parked at the bus station sometimes can be unbearable. But I've lived on Myers Drive for 50 years, and I guess over time I've just come, gotten used to it. I don't know if I could take expanding their parking lot by about half and them increasing the amount of buses that they're going to park there by half. They're already kind of infringing on some, what I just found out tonight, or some rules or policies. They're supposed to be so many feet off the property line. They were given a variance years ago that they could be 17 feet, but that was for employee parking. Their parking buses, I could show you a picture, but I probably don't have time and you're probably not allowed to see it, but they're no more than 10 or 15 feet off the property line between my house and my parents' house. So to add that amount of buses to a residential neighborhood would be devastating from property value, quality of life. I'm sorry, I don't have a prepared statement, I'm just kind of winging this, so yeah, please do not approve that, especially for a company that's already not doing what they're supposed to. I don't know why you would reward them by now changing the zoning. Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
Next, we have Erin Gerlings, followed by Elizabeth Lee and Michael Leary.
Thank you. I'm here in opposition of 1008. I live on the other side of, is it 95? Apparently you guys all live on Gun Road. I love Gun Road. I frequently walk there and bike there, but I live on the other side in Relay, and I frequently walk along Viaduct Avenue, but I take my daughter to and from school, and before that, her place of daycare, which was the old elementary school, and frequently drive there. And over the last seven years that I've lived there, we've seen increased development in the area, and they continue to add speed abatement, and the roads were not built to support that. Town was built literally for the railroad, First Railroad, and now the Viaduct Avenue during the summer, it's a frequent parking area for access to the park. It's a deteriorating road. It wasn't designed to do what it is today, and, you know, I'm not really sure how the change in commercial would help improve that particular area. I'm always worried enough already for the amount of traffic and the amount of support that we already have in the area, and I'm just here in opposition. I'm taking my daughter home, going to take her to bed, she's got school tomorrow, so bye, everybody. Take care. Thank you so much for listening. Opposition to 1008.
Next, we have Elizabeth Lee, followed by Michael Leary and John Boone.
Hello. Can you hear me? Short woman problems. So I'm speaking out against, or 1020. I'm against the rezoning of the St. Timothy's Church from five units per acre to 16 units per acre. I live next door to this property. I brought my house in 1994 with my husband. We raised our children there. My kids and the neighborhood kids all played soccer and baseball at the Athletic Association there at St. Timothy's Church. This proposed change would convert a historic church to a high-density living space. Ingleside Avenue between Frederick Road and Ebenson Avenue is very narrow. It's hard to walk along the stretch of Ingleside Avenue. You have UMBC buses coming through that road, you have MTA buses going through the road, but if you add 56 units, it would overwhelm an already overwhelmed road. My street of Wallerson Road is probably one of the shortest streets in Catonsville, Baltimore County. People don't know where it is, and we tell them, oh, it's next to St. Timothy's Church, and they say, oh, yeah, okay, we know where you are. But with this traffic with Ingleside Avenue, with increasing by another 56 units, it would be very difficult to move from our street onto Ingleside Avenue. Already, our street gets blocked during certain times of the day when UMBC shuts down, when the kids get out of school, and the traffic is so bad there on Frederick Road and Ingleside Avenue, it's probably the worst traffic, traffic stop in all of Baltimore County because you can't make a left there between 7:00 AM and 7:00 PM, and you kind of dread going at that intersection. And the reason why there's that intersection is because the traffic, it backs up the traffic.
Thank you. Next, we have Michael Leary, followed by John Boone and Doha Shafi? Shafi? All right. Michael? No, okay, moving on. John Boone?
Good evening. Thanks for bearing with us tonight. I originally, my name is John Boone, and I live in Catonsville, just a little bit east of the Beltway, and I'd like to talk about, what is it, 1001003. I originally sent a letter opposing the petitioner's request to rezone the historic residence from 5.5 to 16 DR, thinking wrongly that he basically wanted to expand 300% of the number of dwelling units in this house with a square footage of 3,000 square feet. So 16 into 3,000 would have been 188 feet per dwelling unit, and that's not a family-friendly operation for anybody. So I'm glad I came here tonight because I talked to the petitioner, who reassured me that that's, he had no intentions of doing that. In fact, he was, the only reason he did it because it was, because of the rigidity of the county zoning classification. He wants to keep his DR5 classification, which has been the case for at least 60 years, and I have no objection at all to that. However, I do have some caveats. By giving the petitioner that 16 DR, you're allowing the precedent. So if he leaves the property, somebody else comes in who is not as benign as this fellow, that's going to create problems. It's also going to create problems even with the precedent of zoning classification for residents on that narrow street with a huge number of parking problems. In any event, I support that, his petition, but with caveats.
Thank you, sir.
Next, we have Doha Shafi, followed by Lauren Brando and Chris Bayer.
My name is Doha. I'm in support for 1005. I live right there in the middle of the lot in ISB Community, 6613 Johnny Cake Road, and I'm in support of it because it's my community, and I've been there for like 15, 20 years, so I've seen the community grow and I've seen the problems that these people are bringing up, saying about traffic and everything, and they're not wrong about it, but it's an hour out of my time that sometimes I have to deal with it, we deal with it. But the plans that the community is doing is very useful for our elderly and disabled people and for anyone else that needs it. ISB Community does a lot for other people, other religions and race, so there's no need for concern that they're bringing up. They're not wrong, the roads need work, but again, maybe we can do something about that as well. So I'm in support for 1005. Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
Next, we have Lauren Brando, followed by Chris Bayer and Nathan Suberi.
Speakers, please come up forward.
So thank you for allowing me this opportunity to speak. I'm speaking in response to CZMP issue 1018 regarding Silver Spring Road west of Hammond's Ferry. This rezoning issue would make a residential zone, an industrial zone, and as we know, when industrial development happens next to residential areas, there is real harm to the residents of that community in terms of health, safety, and property values. So let me be clear, I am in opposition to this rezoning measure. So I live right across the street from this rezoning measure, and to paint a picture for you where we live, as my neighbor a few commenters ago pointed out, we kind of live in a forgotten part of Baltimore County. We live basically around a blind curb that's the only way into the community. Semi-traffic hurdles around this curb, far exceeding the 25 mile per hour speed limit, often killing pets, hopefully not harming any children yet, though there is a bus stop there, and they hurdle around this curb to go to the businesses at the end of the street. There is a divot in the road that is so deep and so poorly patched that every time a tractor-trailer goes over this divot at 5:30 in the morning, as my neighbor pointed out, it sounded way worse than what we had to endure earlier over there. It's kerplunk, 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 kerplunk. It happens in the middle of the night, it happens all hours of the night.
Thank you so much.
Next, we have Chris Bayer, followed by Nathan Suberi and Erin Davis.
Chris Bayer is not here. He'll submit by email. Thank you.
All right, thank you.
Thank you. Next, Nathan Suberi, followed by Erin Davis and Joanne Parker.
Okay. Good.
No, Nathan. Erin? Pamela Fetch? 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 After Pamela, we'll have Shreyas Panchargarh and Michelle Knighton.
Good evening. My name is Pamela Fetch. I live at 103 South Simmington Avenue. I'm speaking about the issue for 1003, the upzoning from 5.5 to 16. I'm past president of Paradise Community Association and currently on the board. Paradise Community works very hard to get the zoning changed throughout our area because it was a mishmash. It's unfortunate that these owners have been caught in this mess, and frankly, it's a mess that the county's making over decades. I'm opposed to it being upzoned to 16. I live directly across the street. Some of the people are in that house or friends of mine. I don't want to see them move, but I don't want to see a fifth apartment. Right now, there are six cars in four apartments. A fifth apartment, who's to say how many cars are there? And be honest with you, enforcement in the county sometimes is kind of lagging. So I am opposed, and I'm directly across the street, and I do feel sorry for the owners. Maybe some sort of deal could be worked out with upzoning it to 16. Thank you.
Thank you.
Next, we have Shreyas Panchargarh, followed by Michelle Knighton and Rehan Alavi? Shreyas? Michelle?
Good evening. I'm Michelle Knighton. I live at 500 Gun Road. I am opposed to the rezoning CZMP 1008, 1009 pertaining to 5301 Gun Road. As you already know, Gun Road has been described as a quiet, preserved, narrow, two-lane residential road that culminates at a pedestrian-only entrance to the Patapsco State Park and the Patapsco River. Although it has no sidewalk, it is regularly traversed by hikers, bikers, and slow residential traffic. This rezoning request would, is not only asking for a large residential change, but no one has mentioned it is asking for large commercial. This may include clubs, banks, food stores, medical clinics, taverns, and retail. This street, Gun Road, has 43 houses on it. It could never support such a change. It also flies in the face of the Master Plan 2030 to preserve green space, and also there's a zero-death program in Maryland for pedestrian and bicyclist deaths that this would definitely impact. I want you to notice that everyone that came to support the developer has left. They don't live on Gun Road, they are not directly affected by any of these changes, and our entire community sits here before you still to provide support and to oppose this. I really appreciate you staying here so late, and thank you.
Thank you.
Next, we have Rehan Alavi, followed by Melanie McMillan and Michelle Melka.
Good evening, everyone. Again, as the last lady has mentioned, thank you very much for staying late and listening to all the community members. I'm here regarding issue number 1-005 in support. I serve on the Islamic Society of Baltimore as the general secretary currently, and I want to share that a large percentage of our congregation are elderly. They worked very hard over the past 40 years to build the mosque and build a community, and many of them reside around the area, and it is a lot of these residents who have also increased the property values of the area by wanting to live near the mosque. One of the big ups that we have at the Islamic Society of Baltimore is our Golden Age Village, which is one of 18 nationally recognized villages in the country. A big part of the Golden Age Village mission is having programs where you can age in place, and that's part of the reason why the Islamic Society of Baltimore procured this lot on 6605 and 6607 Johnny Cake, to be able to have a larger master plan of developing housing that would complement what's already existing in the area and that would create a walkable path to the mosque and to the existing Golden Age Village. It's really important for our seniors, and I'm here speaking on behalf of the 200-plus seniors that are part of our Golden Age Village, to be able to, for us to be able to help develop housing and residences for them as they age that's graceful and that allows them to, in their later years of life, be able to worship freely and in a safe manner. Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Next, we have Melanie McMillan, followed by Michelle Melka and Chris Zach.
Hi, I'm Melanie. I live in Relay on Viaduct Avenue, which is east of 95. When I bought my property in 2018 and found out that it was on a septic system, I called the county and inquired about the tie-in to the sewage, and I was told, no urgency, get used to the septic. So if it's good enough for the few houses on Viaduct Road that still have septic, why isn't it good enough for those houses over on Gun Road? So also, if there's a lack of urgency because you've been led to believe that there's this contamination issue by our properties into the Patapsco River, if you've ever come down where the Patapsco, excuse me, Patapsco State Park entrance is, it's South Rolling Road and First, right? The park packs early in the summer. Carloads full of people go in there and swim in that river. They close the gate, overflow goes out onto Route 1, right? That's a big problem. If you notice the demographics of the people going in that area to swim, all right, I'm not going to state it, but the reality of it is, if there is such an urgency, why is the EPA and the National Park Service not blocking these people from swimming in that river? If there's such an urgency of contamination from our properties, why is it not being deliberately If there's such an urgency of contamination from our properties, why is it not being deliberately stopped? Because it is not an urgency as it has been portrayed to you. Thank you.
Sorry, Madam Chair, I lost my spot. Next up, we have Michelle Melka, followed by Chris Zach.
Hi, good evening. I'm here to speak against Issue 1-005. My family and I have lived on Redgate for over seven years. We're very active in our community with our children. We have nine children. We take walks, we play at the playgrounds, we engage with the neighbors. Our kids are out shoveling the driveways for neighbors. I'm very concerned about the increased traffic and congestion with the proposed rezoning. Our 15-year-old daughter was hit by a car crossing at the crosswalk of Crosby Road and Rolling Road in August of 2022, coming home from our community pool. The traffic in the area is very congested and dangerous as it is, and it cannot support the added apartment buildings that they are proposing. So I just ask that you are against this bill. Thank you, this rezoning. Thank you.
Thank you.
Next, we have Chris Zach, followed by Linda Kane and David Melka.
Oh, well. Greetings. I'm Christopher Zach, former president of and current zoning chair for the Relay Improvement Association. I've been a resident of the community for 30 years. On our behalf and on the behalf of the citizens of Gun Road, I am here to oppose 1008-1009. Reason why is four years ago, citizens of Relay worked together to set our entire community's historic district from a patchwork of different things to DR2. We did it because the community and the proposed developments at the time would have forever changed the nature of our historic neighborhood and of the Patapsco Valley area. As stewards of the community and as people who have just lived there forever, we did not want that. We live here. This is our home. Members of the RIA Relay Improvement Association live on Gun Road. They oppose this proposed zoning change. We stand with them, and on behalf of the members of the RIA, we request you deny this change for 1008, 1009. Thank you very much.
Thank you, sir.
Next, we have Linda Kane, followed by David Melka.
Hi, I'm Linda Kane. I live on Woodland. I'm on the other side of 95, which would be the east side. I live in a land called the moving earth. We bought the house from Pop Johnson, who passed away, and his yard sunk 85 feet. Why did it sink? Because Route 95, an interstate highway, is not tipped correctly. Then across from 95 is Martin Burrietta, now owned by the University of Baltimore County, Maryland. And if you put dye on their hill, that dye eventually comes over to my backyard, which now has fallen 65 feet. I now have a blue line that goes between my neighbors, the Plitts, and Barbara and I home, showing how fast this land is falling. Now, every engineer that has been down to the Herbert's House and the people that live on Viaduct has been told, there's no problem. But if you know anything about Mother Earth, you cannot build where there's no dirt. We have clay. On top of that clay is a little bit of mud. Then on top of that dirt is more mud. This doesn't work together. It works like this. Water goes in between, pushing out the dirt, creating the mud holes that makes our land drop. And Zero Eight Eight, the lady, the people that live on Keats Road, they're bringing dirt in, which is going to change the velocity of the land again. That water already has one place to go again, across 95, under 95, and down to all the people that live on the east side of Relay. It is also a historic area. If you can't check your history books, it goes back to before the Civil War. And this has been an ongoing thing. Every time something is approved, another engineer has to come in. Thank you.
Next up, we have David Melka.
Hello, David Melka, and I'm in opposition to 1005. So this is my first meeting, and thank you very much for your patience with us and hearing us all out. I have no ill will to the Islamic Society of Baltimore, and, you know, certainly their community is thriving, and I definitely support elders aging in place. What I am concerned about is, as my wife mentioned, we have nine kids. Actually, my parents have 25 grandkids that are still in the neighborhood. I've grown up in Catonsville, in Baltimore City, right by, adjacent to Catonsville, and I live two blocks away from the proposed site. What I'm concerned about is the infrastructure in the area. As you've heard before, the streets are narrow. I'd like to see more engagement with our community association, more transparency. Maybe that's happened, but I only heard about this about a week ago. And I'd like to see the infrastructure and a plan of how we're going to, you know, build up our schools, how are we going to build up our roads to accommodate such facilities, and, you know, who's going to pay for it? How is that going to work? What other resources is that going to take advantage? What are the options? Maybe they could build slower. So I ask that you oppose this rezoning at this time so that we have time for more community engagement, more dialogue, and be able to come up with a plan that works both for the neighborhood as well as for their needs. Thank you very much.
Thank you. And thank you all for your cooperation and for coming out for the first meeting of the 2024 Baltimore County Planning Board, CZMP. We will take all your comments into consideration, and please have safe travels home. Have a good evening, folks.